This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Yes, we must be on. Okay. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for August 30th at 6 o'clock. And if we could first stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
............................................................... So, we have four of our members here tonight. Joy won't be here this evening. But we will get started. We've got a pretty, pretty full agenda, and we'll try to get through it as efficiently as we can. And let us start off. Any open time for the public? Oh, my goodness. Surprise, surprise.
Diana Federman, 3 Birchwood Drive. And I'm a part of the community at the First Congregational Church over there, and I'm the, um, on the finance and property team. And on behalf of them, and of all the people who attend the church and use the church, I just want to say thank you very much for the ARPA funds. It made a huge difference to us, or to the community, and we've had all kinds of compliments from people about how it improved the curb appeal of the church. I haven't heard from the highway super, but I'm sure he's grateful, too. And it's just such a pleasure to drive up there instead of going around and knowing that it's safe, it looks great, and just really wanted to say thank you on behalf of everyone. Because I don't think without your support that it would have happened.
Well, thanks very much. And I think you all were like one of the first projects actually completed as well, so thank you for that. Very good. Okay. If nobody else, then let's just jump right into our presentations tonight. We actually have our representative, Kelly Pease, here to give us a bit of a district or update in terms of what's going on on Beacon Hill, or any words of wisdom that he might have for the town here.
Well, I really appreciate it. It's always a pleasure to be out here, and I look forward to, I think officially representing the town of Southampton after November. But until then, I do the best I can right now. So, you're pretty well aware of what your Chapter 970 money is, I believe, and I can actually leave this with Ed, too, but I'm sure you're all aware of your 70 and your 90 money for this next fiscal budget that came through. Some of the big projects that we had out there was the bond bill, which we don't know where that's going to be with the, that had the rail trail in it.
Right.
And so that, hopefully, but I hope we're getting another grant, grant attempt at that, too. I'm not sure if we, if another one came out that we can apply again to get back in that pipeline, maybe.
Is the bond bill still in process to be approved?
Yeah, we got to get it out of the governor's office, so I'm going to inquire some more to see when, because you never know. Sometimes when it gets approved for bonding, it could be years. I mean, and I've learned that in my short two years, like, oh, it's got to approve. And some of the elders pulled me aside and said, "It could be a while before they push the bond bill out. They got to make sure where their rating's at and how much they're going to spend."
Right, yeah. That was the $100,000, I think, and thank you for putting that in, because that was to make up for a grant that we had, but they wouldn't extend, because we don't totally have the acquisition of the railway in our, in our possession at the moment, so.
Right, and I hope that, that's going well, that transition, so if we do get the money, then we can move forward. The other big thing that we had in there was, not in there, but in the final, end session, the economic development bill that got shelved for the time being. We had the $100,000 for the study for the new safety complex. So, we're hoping that's going to go somewhere, but I can tell you, my feeling is, is that the Speaker of the House isn't going to do anything until he knows exactly how much money we got to pay back to the taxpayers and see where we're at. Which I guess is technically is a good fiscal responsible thing to do. I may as well just say, "We got the money, let's just go ahead and, and push this through." But he just wants to wait, and it looks like it's coming out mid-September, and it sounds like the way the governor was speaking yesterday is, they got a pretty good feel that it's going to be the $3 billion that will be going back to the taxpayers, which base roughly, I guess, about 12.5% of whatever you paid into taxes last year is what you'll get for a refund, is how that will work. But again, they're still waiting for the final numbers from the auditor to come through. And once that comes through, I expect a big portion, or a lot of that economic development bill will kind of go through in even informal sessions, since it had such favor from across the board amongst reps, because it did a lot of good stuff in there. So if I know more, I'll let you know. I'll keep everybody up to speed, but right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern with that economic development bill and getting that money to help with the safety complex.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I think that's about it right now. We're pretty much in a lull, because it's an election year, so we end our session at the end of July on election year, and it's kind of just informal sessions, but we're still working on like the liquor license bill that got out of the committee, and it's now sitting in another committee. And I'm trying to, and I've reached out to that chairman to say, "Can we get it to the floor and done?" So, and I haven't heard back too much, and I have my leaders down there at the State House inquiring about that, so we'll keep working that. But like, and then obviously, we'll start back up full-borne on the first Wednesday of the New Year. And then, and then next year, since it's not election year, we do go right up to Thanksgiving for formal session, so that's how the, that's how the, that's how the calendar works, anyway. So, so if there's, and I know the regional transportation school.
Right.
I understand that. Matter of fact, I put that in there, that, you know, last year they were saying, I think they were, fully funded would be like 87 million, and they only got 82 approved in this year's budget. So I know that's a shortfall that we need to continue to fight and work for. And I know that, I think the Mass Municipal Association was recommending like a 90, or somebody put in an amendment for 97 million, which would have been good, especially probably with the cost of gas over this period of time and everything, and every, everything going up. But in the end, this year it's at 82 million and some change. It's not up to the 87, which they feel is more like the fully funded, so we'll still fight those battles going forward in the future years. And unless there's anything else, that's kind of my update.
I can't underscore how important regional transportation is to Southampton. We have lost so much money since this whole thing started. We're encouraged to regionalize. We regionalize, and then we don't get, it's an unfunded mandate with the state. And if you add up all the money that we've lost since it actually came into play, so I know that we're just one little town that you represent in addition to Westfield, but I can't tell you how important it is and how much money we've lost, because the difference between 82 and 87 is a huge amount of money. I mean, John can tell you how much the school transportation contract, how much it went up was astronomical. So, anyway, I just want to second that.
No, I, and I totally got that from our first meeting, that that's very important. I don't have to worry about that with Westfield, but obviously, even again, growing up in Hilltown, it's a gateway. I know that's probably an issue there, and you got to take care of those regional schools. I mean, they struggle to keep going.
Yeah.
And I know, I think Southampton's one of the biggest population in Hampshire region, right?
Yeah, a little over 50%.
Right, and I've reached out to the superintendent and the principal just to go over and have a sit-down and see what their priorities are, to make sure I'm, I'm in, I'm pretty much in line, I think, with, with what, what schools need, because I'm a big school and road guy. That's what I fight for, so.
Great, okay. We need both. Any other comments, questions, or anything?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, thanks very much for coming.
Thank you. Always a pleasure.
We appreciate you.
And we'll see you out at some events out here, I'm sure.
All right.
Great, thanks.
Thank you for keeping Southampton on the radar for you.
Absolutely.
We don't want to get swallowed up by Westfield, you know.
No.
Very good.
See you.
Thank you so much. All right. Okay. Okay, so tonight, we have a couple of, for at least one presentation. We've got our folks here from Eversource. In lieu of our normal department head kind of reports, we had decided to reach out to some of our community partners and see if we could learn a little bit more about what they do, since we do have a lot of interaction with them from time to time, and hopefully not just in crisis situations, so we can hopefully all learn a little bit tonight. So, we'll get set up here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we're having just a momentary technology.
Sure.
I have a presentation on thumb drive.
Okay.
If we have to go that route, but if, computers, so we have company computers with Eversource, and part of our company's security is because unsavory characters like North Korea, Iran are trying to break into our grid, and our computers are actually part of that system.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, so if we don't get in here, it's actually kind of a good thing, you know, but we do have a thumb drive, and you do it that way.
I'm just going to run and get a water.
Yeah, I can go get mine.
Yeah, we might have to swap a, swap a laptop or something that's got less security on it, or something, or different security on it, I should say.
Let's try this again.
Yeah, different part than what you put.
Yes, I think so. Ours is pretty tight. Yeah, it might be. From outside.
To get to here, I had to bypass, not bypass, but it says, "This is unsecure. You want to keep going."
And that's okay to ask.
And I said, "Yes," and I think, "I want to keep going," and it's saying, "I'm not going to let you."
Okay, I'm going to go, I'm going to go get my laptop.
All right, well, we'll, if you want to say a word or two while we're waiting, or introduce yourselves. Yeah, so we've got Joe, Joe Mitchell and Mike Rosenberg.
And Mike Rosenberg, and good evening, and thank you for having us. I'm Joe Mitchell. I'm your Community Relations and Economic Development Specialist for Eversource Energy.
Yep, you might need to be closer to the mic, just to be careful.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, since we are TV recorded here.
Thank you.
Exactly, and the camera is...
Well, it's kind of, they're everywhere, but they can't...
Got, oh, I see.
Good catch you. You're on the screen.
You're on the screen behind you.
Good to know. So, I'm your Community Relations Specialist for the town of Southampton. I have 22 cities and towns in the Pioneer Valley. I deal on almost a daily basis, or definitely on a weekly basis, with your Town Administrator, Ed Gibson, and your, your Police Chief, Ellingsworth, and also Chief Workman, mostly on a preparation for storm events kind of, kind of thing, but also during blue sky, which I think Michael talked about a little bit, just the day-to-day, any different, where our crews may be interacting with the city folks, or just all of our infrastructure, whether it be vegetation management or things like that. So, Ed and your two chiefs, they don't dial 1-800-EVERSOURCE and wait online and press 2, press 1. I'm your person, I'm your go-to to solve the problems or answer the questions that your city administrators have. And with me is, is Mike Rosenberg, who is our distribution, he's a supervisor of design engineering for Eversource for Western Mass, and also a very happy Southampton resident.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, we know, we know and like him very much.
I'm just afraid to ask who did it.
Which file are the orders? So, it's the, Eversource, the PowerPoint, so the second one from the top.
I have this long checklist I'm working on.
It said, "Not now." I don't want to back that up, and then... I'm going to shrink you for right now. And I'm going to come here, and I want...
Can you send it as an email, or you can't even do that?
Excuse me?
You can't send it as an email, or?
No, I, it's on a thumb drive, so now it's on Ed's computer now. You can do it from right there.
While I'm in here, I'm cutting all our electric rates.
Oh, good idea, good idea.
I know there's people sharper than me in the company that will keep that from happening, but maybe not, maybe not sharper than you, Ed, so.
Good try, good.
Everyone's sharper than me when it comes to technology.
There it is. Okay.
Audio reception is not good out there. Okay, well, we, yeah, once we get going, we'll get it.
Okay.
Everybody get your mics handy here, too, and we'll be, we're just kind of mumbling, guys. Be patient, folks, we're just getting our technical difficulties straightened out here. We'll be back with you in a minute.
Here it is. 1-0-0-1. Oh, come on, it's that. 1-0-0-1. You have to present. Then I can share. There we go, and PowerPoint.
Hope. Okay. There you go, okay. All right, so if you could just talk right into that mic, and hopefully this will be good, good reception out there.
Good evening, Michael Rosenberg. I almost said 144 East Street. Supervisor for Field Engineering for Eversource. Joe did a little bit of his background, so my department, for Eversource, handles the design of all of our large capital projects, which is part of our capital budget. We also handle the design of road relocation work, so the Safe Routes to School on 5 and 10, the East Street Bridge, really any acts of public authority where the poles need to relocate in Western Massachusetts. We also handle the survey and make-ready and licensing for third-party attachments, fiber build-outs. We do lots of, lots of stuff, right, kind of a big bucket. The only thing we don't really do is meter work. That's a separate group. We're always here to help, you know, if someone has a question, you can always reach out to me. May not be someone in my group that handles the meter set for your construction project, but we can get you in touch with the individuals, so. So, we're going to talk about two distribution engineering, or kind of projects related to Southampton first, and then there were some other questions that Ed had forwarded that he'll kind of address at the end. So, as of right now, the only large project we have going in Southampton is an overhead plant upgrade on Russellville Road. It's Russellville, Foomer, and Montgomery. It's about 20,000 feet of reconductoring. So, we're replacing 75-ish poles reconductoring, 20,000 feet of 102556, which will raise the impacity and allow us to basically pick up more load on either side of that circuit. And we're replacing all of the transformers on that road. The wire is small. There haven't been many improvements outside of general maintenance over the last probably couple decades there. So, this project is actually going to allow us to, it's going to allow for a greater number of customers to be transferred from the Gunn Substation Circuit in East Hampton to the Blandford Substation Circuit in Blandford during blue or gray sky days. So, one thing that, you know, not everyone may understand is your town is, there are multiple circuits running through it, right, but those circuits run from town to town to town. Southampton is fed from circuits from the Gunn Substation, 15A, and then there are subsequent circuit numbers after. The 15A1, for instance, which goes up Russellville Road, has a backfeed circuit out of Blandford called the 19J. Is it the J5? It might be the J5. But there's an adjacent substation that provides backup to Southampton and East Hampton, for that matter. What we've been doing, and this is kind of a continuous process, is we like to fortify those ties and make sure that we're able to pick up more customers from one station to another. We're doing a substation upgrade in Blandford. It's essentially going to allow it to pick up more customers. Gunn Substation was upgraded, maybe 10 years ago, 11 years ago, there was a lot of work done there. So, between the two substations, we want a better connection in between. This allows us to do that with the upsize of the wire. We can pick up more customers on either end. We can utilize that tie during blue sky days, so if we were performing maintenance somewhere and we had to take a piece or a section of the circuit offline, we could essentially backfeed from both directions, pick up all the customers. And then gray sky or, you know, full storm event, it allows us to pick up additional customers if there are tree events, wires down, those types of things. So, having these ties are really important, not just for Southampton, but adjacent communities, too. And we, you know, this project, for instance, had poll petitions. You know, we come before the town, we present the polls. They're midspan polls, we try to spot them, so they're accommodating for the residents, you know, at, kind of like at the corner of the plot lines, right? So, then we do have it in the middle. We try to lay them out so they work well, because with a bigger wire, we need a shorter span between poles, because the wire's heavier. So, like I said, this is the big project we have in Southampton right now, but it is a huge, it will be a huge improvement for us for reliability in the future, right? Any storm event or kind of blue sky day. And the more ties we build, the more, the more resilient and the more we can adapt if, if changes happen in the system. We're doing the same thing between Ashfield and Plainfield. We're doing some similar work up in Montague. Some of the areas that we haven't necessarily had to address because of low customer load, we're now just addressing from a reliability perspective. Any questions on this work? Our crews will be working there for the rest of the year. They should finish this year the whole project, but it may spill over a little bit in the winter.
I have one. How, how did it happen to be that it's this location that was selected? Is it because it's been more prone to problems during storm events, or is there a demographic issue, or how does it, how was that area of town selected?
So, this is the backbone circuit tie between the two circuits. So, it's been, it's been repaired, there's been some wires down, there's splices, it's, we kind of have a running list of these, these types of situations, and it's now reached its point where it is next on the list to be improved, so that we can have a more consistent impacity on the circuit with the same size wire. Because what happens with the 102 versus a 556 is you'll have 102 in the middle and 556 on either end. That section of smaller wire becomes the limiting factor, and so you're only allowed to put so many customers on that circuit because of that section of wire. So, if we improve the wire, you know, in the middle and on either end, it allows you to pick up more customers during a switching event, so.
Good, thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? Okay, keep on rolling.
All right, the next one is grid modernization. Grid modernization slash volt var optimization. So, there are, and I will say, a lot of technical engineering-related things here. Some are far above me, but we will, we will make sure we discuss it kind of at a good, good common level. As a part of our grid modernization plan, volt var optimization, or VVO, works to reduce line losses associated with voltage and increase power quality. So, similar to a faucet, you open the faucet, there's good pressure at the house. 200 feet away, the pressure drops. The same thing essentially happens with electricity. This project's, this project goes to address that by adding equipment to the line, so that the customer at the end of the line receives the same amount of flow, pressure, same volts at their house. So, the VVO project enables the optimal management of system-wide voltage levels and reactive power var to achieve, to achieve efficient operations. VVO reduces peak demand and energy use, minimizes environmental impact, and ultimately lowers electric bills. So, one thing to keep in mind, right, the, all the equipment in your house is designed to run on 120 volts or 240 volts, right? So, your house should be receiving 120 volts for your equipment to run properly. If your equipment runs properly, it's not going to take longer to do something. You're essentially using less electricity. There is a factor of plus or minus, I think it's 2%, you know, your voltage can be up and down, and your equipment is designed in your home to operate on that, but if you're in an area where it's a really long run and you have lower voltage, your refrigerator's going to work harder, your, your microwave's going to work harder. All those appliances that are running are going to work harder during the day and during the evening. So, grid mod looks to mitigate that by adjusting the voltage and monitoring the voltage on the system. So, couple of the pieces of equipment here, and if you drive around and look up, you will see some of these. So, the Eclera head-end sensors, these are located at the substation, so it monitors voltage leaving the station. We can also modulate the voltage at the station slightly. We can go up very slight, down very slight, to help, help kind of the end customer. This clamps right onto the wire. It has an integrated LTE modem, so we have a system in our dispatch center that receives the information, and the engineers can review and see what it looks like. Bytronic Lindsay end-of-line sensors, so same concept, just goes at the end of the line or close to the end of the line to monitor, and it can measure, it can give you the delta between the two, right? So, once you have the delta, you need to know if the circuit needs to go up or down. We can do that with regulators and capacitor banks. So, we have specialized regulators, which are installed on platforms or pole-mounted. They control and regulate the voltage. These are also part of the monitoring system that the engineers are able to look at and kind of adjust to, and they do work bi-directional, so they can sense the voltage, and if it needs to go up and say both directions, it's able to do that. And then capacitor banks as well, allowed to, allowed to modify and kind of adjust as needed to ensure that the voltage reaching your home is what it needs to be. This is also tied into the same system as the, the other pieces of equipment. One thing that's not on here, and I will bring up, is we are also looking at, there are a couple neighborhoods where we're installing, there's small capacitor banks, there's secondary capacitor banks. We're installing those on areas where, let's say, there's a few homes with PV, right, because sometimes that can cause the voltage to get a little funky, because they're feeding into the system. So, these are, they're in production, but they're almost kind of like a pilot for us to see how well that modulates and how well that translates to better customer voltage at the meter. But these four items, coupled with that, have been installed and are being installed in Southampton, East Hampton, and West Hampton, really to address some of the end-of-line circuits where customers may be receiving low voltage or other issues, and it's, this is our, I think our fifth, I'll say, I think it's the fourth substation we've done in Western Mass. We did two in Springfield, we did one in Hadley, one in Pittsfield, and this one, so five. This is the fifth substation. It's been working out well. Everything kind of feeds into a system. We did a test year with these circuits in Springfield, and now we're kind of in production. So, this will be something happening, not just to this town, but other towns. And I think at the end of the day, it's about making sure customers receive optimum voltage. Equipment runs the same, and it allows us to monitor and adjust the grid as needed, which is, which is good, good for the customer. With a lot of the distributed generation, the solar, some of the other projects coming online, like I said, it does cause some fluctuations with the system, and this allows us to really monitor that closer and make sure it doesn't create downstream or upstream issues with adjacent customers.
Great.
Any questions or comments?
Not on this piece, no.
No, not yet, no.
All right, good.
I'll add one thing. What Mike said, he said, used the word PV, photovoltaic, so solar on your house or solar in your yard. And in the olden days, when I was just a kid, there'd be a generation asset, maybe it was a coal burner or natural gas, and then through transmission lines, big lines, high voltage, long distance, comes to your community. Then we, as a distribution company, we distribute that electricity to your house, to your companies. And electricity all flowed in one direction. Now, in this day of distributive generation, which means people have some battery backup storage, or they have some solar, or they have some wind, now the electricity's flowing in many different directions. Hence the reason we want, we need to make all these adjustments and do grid modernization and do, you know, volt var optimization, is because the grid was originally built with electricity flowing one way. Now, it's flowing in many different directions, and to make it optimum, at Eversource, what we try to do is bring the safe, reliable delivery of your energy products, so that's the reason we're doing these upgrades. We're not just, we take very seriously the rate payer's funds, and when you pay your bill every month, we want to make sure we're spending it wisely. There were some questions, so Ed actually told us that there were a few questions from the Select Board. One of them had to do with vegetation management. So, generally speaking, for communities, we have a four-year program where we do, let's call it an aggressive cutback, you know, from the power lines. We want to keep your, our infrastructure safe during storms, so we cut it back. It takes roughly four years for it to come back. You may or may not recall, recall or notice that we were here quite a bit last summer, so you're on year, you're on summer number, you know, one complete year, or summer number two of the four-year program. So, you won't see much in the way of our contractors with chainsaws in town for the next couple of years, barring incidents. So, of course, during storms, you're going to see plenty of them and linemen. So of course, during storms, you're going to see plenty of them and linemen. Someone asked about sustainability. And just as a refresher, is in the late 1990s, in Massachusetts, the, you know, what was once the power company was deregulated. So the generation assets, the folks that make the power, whether it be natural gas or NUC or solar or coal or what have you, or wind, they're one company. We are the distribution company, so we try to bring you that product. That being said, though, we are allowed to have some generation assets, but only renewables and only those that the Department of Public Utilities, your state regulating body, allows us. So we have some utility-owned solar, and with some new regulations, we're actually working very aggressively on wind and some additional solar. But that being said, we are, we're very engaged in sustainability, and we have a sustainability commitment. It's in our mission statement with the company, and sustainability with, you know, the environment, but also with environmental justice and social issues. So that's something that we all work by, and our board of directors is very engaged in and wants us to be compliant with. For example, we are part of the state's 2025 and 2030 clean energy plan. So we participate in that, and we are working toward those goals as well. And also, we have a sustainability report that you can see online. And it essentially says, you know, what are we doing? And one of the other questions from one of your select board members is, what's our goal and what are we doing to reduce our carbon footprint? And we have a goal as a company, as your distribution company, we want to be carbon-neutral by 2030. And how do we do that? So in our distribution of your energy, we're working on line loss. So as Mike talked about, the longer the line is, there's more resistance, and the generation asset has to work harder to get that voltage and that current to you. We're replacing, doing these kinds of things keeps us from losing that energy along the line, thus reduces our carbon footprint. Also, we, not here in this town, there's another gentleman who's going to talk shortly, as far as natural gas goes, we've replaced 447 miles of aged bare steel cast iron pipe. And natural gas contains methane, and methane is a, what's it called, a global warming gas. So we're trying to reduce that. That's another step we're taking. In our facilities as a company, we're using LED lights, we're using timers, so we're reducing our carbon footprint in our facilities. And our fleet, we're going to hybrid vehicles and biodiesel. And we're going to replace more than 36% of our fleet to, again, we as a company, we're going to reduce our carbon footprint. And lastly, SF6, which is a sulfur hexafluoride, which is used in some of our insulating our electrical equipment, there is no replacement on the market now, but we're working with other industry partners trying to find a replacement for that. And that sulfur hexafluoride, that's also a greenhouse gas. That was the phrase I was looking for 90 seconds ago and couldn't come up with it. Apologies. And we also, and what we can do for generation, we are investing in, we're partners with Orsted, they're a company out of Europe, very successful in offshore wind. We're partnering with them, and we have some leases down off of the Connecticut shore, and we're going to develop that as a clean energy generation. We also have, we have a fair amount of solar, and in the legislation those passed last January, we're going to do more of that here in Western Mass. And also, we are pioneering in battery backup. So we just went operational out in Provincetown on the Cape with a giant battery. It's bigger than the size of this building. And what that is used for is, we can charge it up overnight when the demand on the grid is lowest and use that on the hottest summer days, discharge the battery, so we're not bringing up another generation asset which might release carbon to the environment. And also, as part of our storm recovery, Provincetown is right at the very end of the Cape, and there's only one line going down there when it washes out. That's the end of that. It takes a while. We can, that battery can use for discharge for several hours, thus eliminating the need for people to fire up their backup generators. And then lastly, oh, we, and because we're regulated by the Department of Public Utilities, the DPU allows us to deliver to you electricity and natural gas. But we asked them in our last rate case, can we do a pilot program for geothermal? So we have, it's a multi-city block in Framingham. We're starting construction this year in a geothermal with many, it's a mixture of our residential and some commercial. We're going to pilot that for two heating seasons and two cooling seasons. We'll analyze this data and then go back to the DPU. Does this make sense? Should we do more of this? Will you allow us to do that? So that's another thing we're doing as a company to reduce our carbon footprint. And that is pretty much it, I do believe.
Great. Thank you. I've got a few questions, I'm sure. Yeah. So let's start down here. Francine?
What percentage of your solar-generated power and your, you know, and your wind make up the amount of energy or electricity that you distribute?
And I'll be honest, it's a small percentage. I wasn't ready for that question. I don't have it at my tip of my fingers. But we are doing the maximum that the Department of Public Utilities allows us. There's other solar assets, and there's other renewable assets out there, and when they put that on the grid, we will deliver it to you, the customers. But as far as how much utility-grade solar, I don't know what that number is. I apologize. But we are doing as much as possible because we are one of the greenest utility companies in the nation, and that's something that we know that you're concerned with. We know you want us to do more of it, but we are very highly regulated, and as much as we can do, we are doing all of that. And so is, and we're not alone. National Grid is doing similar things in other companies as well. So I apologize, I don't know that number. It's small, though. One statistic I do know is in New England, not necessarily Eversource, but in New England, 60% of your electricity is generated via natural gas, which is a carbon-based fuel. It's cleaner than others, but that is the state, but those numbers are changing, but maybe not as fast as everybody would like.
John?
I have three questions. One of them, you just touched on about solar and Western Mass.
Yep.
So of those plans that are right now on the table, are any of them within the Southampton footprint?
No. So the newest, so there was SREC Solar Renewable Energy Credit. There was SREC 1 was one program, then SREC 2, now they're on SMART. The newest one that was signed into legislation earlier this year, it's complicated, but I'll paraphrase in that, and you can put as much solar as you want. As a utility, we have restrictions. So it came out in the legislation those passed, it has to be in an environmental justice community, on property that the utility owns and with the permission of the town itself. So the town has to be on board. And the legislation is new, and it hasn't been promulgated to a great extent. It's brand new. So we're starting with that. And in our company, there are engineers and our renewable energy folks have looked at a number of properties. There is, I can share this, there are two in Western Mass, and they're not approved yet. So we're now, I mean, I, as community relations, am engaging with those two municipalities and also with those environmental justice communities. So environmental justice is very big these days. And with those groups and those towns, and is this something you want to see? Is this something you can get on board with? And we're just taking baby steps now. So I'm not at liberty to say which two communities, but what I will say is Southampton isn't one of them.
It's not one of those.
So I should just cut to the chase. We don't own a piece of property that is big enough and closest to our overhead, and it's complicated.
That's fair enough.
One piece to that, too, just regarding that legislation, regarding the additions, a piece of that is to also have the renewable or the battery storage close to load centers, especially during emergency events. So if you have a school that is a heating/cooling shelter, and there's a property that's able to support solar or battery storage, that's kind of the project that the company's looking to do, because during those emergency events, we can actually power the emergency station. I'm not, I'm not privy, I don't really know about all the communities, but I know that's part of it, right? Is where do you find the best fit so that it's immediately usable once built?
And it's all brand new. No one's done it yet. So there's a handful of criteria, and as we bring this to Department of Public Utilities, we want to hit on all of them. We have a bunch of, we think are A projects, and there's a handful of B and C projects. We're going to start with the As and then move from there.
Okay. My second question is that you currently provide all the power within the town of Southampton.
Electric.
Electric power.
Correct.
Within the town, which includes our streetlights.
Correct.
Right. And whatever they're used, we pay a bill for those. And I understand the Russellville Road upgrade is a needed upgrade, but in reality, to the ratepayers, they're not really going to see it. They're going to see taller telephone poles, thicker lines, if they happen to notice it. The infrastructure behind the scenes, yes, absolutely needs to be done, but it's what do the ratepayers see? And if the Eversource itself is committed to being carbon-free, can we get some support from Eversource on converting our streetlights over to LED, other than, yes, we'll do it, here's the bill to pay 100% of it?
So...
Sorry, just finished my point. It would cut our rates with the LED. LED lights are more efficient than the current lights that are in there. So I get the connection that you would lose revenue per se over this, but it's also something that the ratepayers can see as they drive around and acknowledge.
Correct. And Madam Chairwoman and I discussed this before the meeting started, along those lines anyway. And yes, LEDs do consume less power. It is, and right now, my understanding is that it's on a one-for-one. There's still, we have a stock of the high-pressure sodiums and the other less efficient lights, and we can't, we can't just throw those away and say, we're going to bill you guys for stuff you didn't use. So we're still using those and replacing them one-for-one, and we're almost out of stock, so, which is good. Good for you guys. Two is, it's not a cop-out, and I'm looking at the camera now, it's complicated. We will do that. If you, as a town, want to do that, we can convert. And I have commitments from electrical ops that, and we're actually required to do it, and it's called a reasonable amount of time. And it's roughly, it's a five-year program. We do 20% a year, and we can move forward. But I just caution with this, the amount of energy is less, but, and we don't set these rates. They're set by the Department of Public Utilities as part of the tariff. The older lights consume more power, but they are older, and they've depreciated and have almost, not no cost, but a very low cost. When we buy new lights and the labor and we hang them on the poles, what you're going to find out, and there's a new tariff coming out on January 1, it hasn't been approved yet, but what we're going to see is, they're newer lights, you're going to consume less amount of energy, so that component will drop. But with that newer light, there's a depreciation or rental or something like that. It's a little bit less. You're not going to see this, wow, look at all this savings. So there is, so I just caution with that. And what I would recommend is, I can certainly bring in, I'm community relations, so I'm here to help your town administrator and the fire and police and stuff like that. You also have an account executive, and she works with you when the school bill is off a little bit or something like that, or when you want to do, you want to convert to LEDs. And we can, if you so choose, we can have a meeting, myself and Ed and your account executive, and kind of back of an envelope, if we do this, here's what your savings will be, and here's what the timeline will look like. So that's something we can certainly do.
But in addition to the savings, you would have a smaller carbon footprint.
And so there, and that's the win part. You're absolutely right. There's some more or close to amount of dollars being spent, but you're exactly right, because the consumption of energy will go down.
Okay.
You're correct.
My third question is, given the recent events that California passed, the 2034 event and the law that we had on the books that says, if California does it, so do we, 2035, we are going to abandon any gas-powered vehicles being purchased, does the existing grid as it stands today in Western Mass, i.e. Southampton, can it support? What percentage of electric vehicles in the homes in Southampton can it support? And do you have a plan, I'm assuming, to ramp up towards that?
And I don't know, I can probably, I got to make sure I stay in my lane. I would guess, is the grid capable right now? I would guess absolutely not. We talk, people talk about the electrification of America and, you know, having plug-in cars in your home and stuff like that. And Mike is more knowledgeable than I am, but the infrastructure, those wires, and he's putting in heavier wires on a certain strand there, the wires and the transformers and things like that are not capable of having everybody plug in.
Yes. So going, it's going to go back a slide, right? So the Massachusetts Clean Energy and Climate Plan for 2025, 20, or yeah, 2030. So we do have individuals participating on, I think, separate subcommittees. I don't think we're part of the steering committee, but I think we're on some subcommittees of this. This plan really outlines, you know, that long-term run, how to get there. I think with some of the recent legislation passed, there is funding in there for additional chargers, but really, to support that change, it is a large improvement on the grid. Some areas may be fine because we've made previous improvements. Other areas may need the work. It is something that I think the engineering team are, sort of, they're diligently and actively working on. It's, I couldn't quantify for you today how many houses could.
Would it be safe to say that whatever enhancements need to be made specifically related to Southampton, would, I mean, you guys are in business, right? That would be passed on to the ratepayers in some way, shape, or form? The government's not going to step, unless you know they are, the government's not going to step in and absorb 100% of this cost.
I know. I'm nowhere near the level to know that. But in general, capital improvements made on the system are approved by the Department of Public Utilities. We go to a rate case in advance of increasing the rates. We go to the rate case sort of as an auditing process. So our rates and what goes into those rates are approved by the Department of Public Utilities. I would assume, this is me assuming from here, that if there was a mandate that X will have to happen within 10 to 15 years, there would be higher-level discussions on how do we incorporate that and how does that financially get done?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
First of all, is that a PowerPoint available for us so we can just follow the link?
Absolutely. I can email it. It has it on his computer.
Before you, all your flash grab.
The only other question I had is, we have a big problem with trees in our town. You know, we just had one on Palmory. There's, we, three took down our wonderful historic fence at the cemetery. I live not far from Middle Road, so I see all the work that's being done. You said there's a four-year cycle, so after, you know, year or four, we won't see you for a while, kind of a thing? What is the cycle, you know? So you do work for four years, and then what?
No. So they were here last summer, and they grow back. So they evaluate it, and they say, well, how much do we need to, because, you know, we could go right at the trunk and take everything out, and everyone would be really upset, and we wouldn't have to come back for five, 10 years. So they look, we have arborists, we have some really smart people, and they evaluate different towns, different communities, and they figure out how much they need to cut back to make it last four years worth. It's a dollar thing, too. You know, we could cut back more, but we need to save some of that man, equipment, and resources and dollars for the next community. So they keep it on a four-year cycle, you know, plus-minus. If things are really a very wet season and things are growing back quicker, there might be only three years they have to come back. But the idea is to minimize the outages. You know, when the winds are blowing, we'd rather the trees be a little farther away when the limbs drop versus right over our infrastructure. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's kind of a roundabout way.
One thing, too, that happened, and I noticed because it happened on East Street, right? So the, we do our cutting program. We cut, trim, remove the first layer. Generally speaking, behind that is another row of trees, which are probably not as healthy. They didn't receive as much sunlight. So we have instances where you remove the first, you maybe remove part of the second row, the resident may not allow you, and then we inevitably have more tree issues, right? Because that dead tree's going to fall to the road. They do go through and trim. We respond for maintenance requests. You can call the number on your Eversource bill. There's also a number on Eversource.com where you can put in a request to have a tree looked at that is adjacent to a power line, at risk, leaning.
Regardless of whose property it's on?
Yeah, you can call it on your neighbor.
You're talking about town-owned property. We end up paying a lot of money to...
Yeah. If it's a town-owned property and there's a tree that's putting the lines at risk, just call it in. They'll send an arborist out. We do the maintenance trimming.
Oh, God.
And I think there's always, there's always some workaround there, right? Like if you call in because there's trees that are an issue, they'll address it, even if it's outside of the cycle. Similar thing happened on Middle Road, right? I think they started trimming, there were a lot of things at risk, there'd been some outages, and we...
Cleared a lot.
Yeah. Because I think in the last couple of months, we've lost, you know, power up there a couple of times, and we just had to address it, so.
And that's part of what I do as well. So a DPW director or a town forester or a town administrator, if somebody calls him and says, hey, there's, this big limb is over the wires, I'm worried about it, you let me know, I'll let the arborist know. And we would most certainly rather, on a Tuesday afternoon, have a have a couple of guys in a bucket truck versus Sunday night at 2:00 AM when the winds are howling, trying to take care of it and restring the wires. So that's something we will, we would like to address. So if you notice something, do share. Yes, please.
I've got just one last question because we do have another presentation and we've got a full agenda besides that. But following up a little bit on John's question with the, the conversion to LED lights or potentially, my understanding is if we were to go that way, number one, the maintenance costs or the, you know, once they're up, you guys might help put them up, right? But then after that, you would put them up, but then after that, it's up to us, so that.
No, 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 so that's, that's a different program. So the other program is, so some towns were not happy with the over five years. So if you wanted to buy your streetlights from Eversource, we'd be certainly happy to sell them to you and we'd do an appraisal. Then if you did, and then you'd convert them because we're not moving fast enough. They're my lights now, I want to convert them. Once you buy them, then they would be yours just to fix them. But no, if, if you're waiting for us and we come, you want to do it.
Your period.
It's rough, give or take, you know. So we try to do 20% per year and then chances are they won't. The LEDs last longer and it shouldn't be an issue. Car versus pole is another story altogether. So when, on a slippery, slippery night and someone takes one out, you know, we still come and fix it, but whether it's new or old.
And I think the only thing I've seen recently on various social media and so forth, East Hampton's apparently converting some of them right now. And I know there've been various complaints about how bright they are and how, how much they invade people's houses and.
And I know we try to do them like neighborhoods at a time, because especially if you have a old light, you know, a golden yellow, golden yellow, bright white, golden yellow, people notice that. So we try to do them a neighborhood at a time.
So anyway, so there's, there's things to consider for sure.
Just one more on that, so on those lights, would that only apply to the streetlights that fall within non-state roads in town? So like if we decide to do it over five years, would that cover College Highway? Because that's state highway.
What a great question. I wasn't expecting that. I can, I can research and get back to you. I think, because even the ones, so even the ones that are owned by the state highway, oh, excuse me, that are on state highway that aren't, and it's not your highway, Mass Department of Transportation, they pay the bill, you don't, but they're still our light. So I think, I think we'd probably do those as well. I don't know for a fact, but let me look at that.
Okay, good. All right, I think we want to wrap up.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, a very thorough presentation and we appreciate you coming. Thanks very much. All right. Okay, we have next up our reps from Hoyoke Gas and Electric. And I think we have Jim Lovell, is that right? And Brian Roy.
Good.
Good. You're welcome.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for joining us tonight. And this is sort of new for us to have our community partners come and join us. So we're interested to hear a little bit more about what you're doing with Southampton, so.
Well, great, and thanks a lot for the invite tonight. And I'm Jim Lovell, General Manager at Hoyoke Gas and Electric. With me is our Gas Superintendent, Brian Roy, so he's our subject matter expert. So anything with the gas topic, I'll let Brian steer the ship. But I don't know, I apologize for not bringing a flash drive, but I neglected to ask Ed if you were outfitted for one. So we'll just go through in whatever format you prefer.
Sure, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay, so I had, Ed had sent a couple or a handful of questions. Would you prefer that I just go through the questions?
Sure.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
So the first question that we got was, please describe protocols your company's currently following that are designed to protect the environment and reduce the impact of climate change. So, I mean, we have gas and electric operations at HG&E. Our mission to reduce our carbon footprint started well over 20 years ago when we acquired the Hoyoke Dam from Northeast Utilities, now at Eversource. But we've also been very aggressive with energy conservation, energy efficiency to kind of reduce demand. But also with solar, we're, you know, recognized by the, several industry sources for our efforts in solar. We've got almost 20 megawatts of solar capacity installed right now. And we've been aggressive on the battery storage front as well. So anything that's viable that we can plug into our system, we've been taking full advantage of. And, you know, as a municipal utility, we're still vertically integrated. So we are allowed to own and operate electric generating resources, also to own transmission and distribution assets. So again, we try to take full advantage of those assets. I know you're interested on the gas side because you just heard a lot on the electric. So maybe I'll have Brian talk specifically about some of the things that we're doing on the, on the gas side of things to reduce our footprint.
However, in that quick segma, if perchance the town were interested in purchasing and not waiting for five years to streetlights outright and converting them and then looking for a partner to service them for us, that would be a very high possibility to partner with Hoyoke Gas and Electric for that.
Yes, I mean, we've done our, we did our own. I was interested in the approach that the gentleman from Eversource described. And we worked with the city, the city is a green community and designated as a green community. So there was some funds available through the Mass Clean Energy Center to offset our conversion to LEDs. But what we, our plan with the city was we funded the entire conversion. And as the gentleman said, there's a depreciation that has to be considered, you know, paying back the upfront. So the city saw no reduction in their streetlight bill for like seven years. But once the bills were paid off for the, for the capital, for the lights and the labor, the bills went down considerably.
And just during those seven years, was it level funded?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, Brian, that's your question. Just speak into the mic so we can hear you all. There, good.
Yep. If I get too close, let me know.
No, no, we need it fairly loud for our transmission here.
Perfect. Well, thank you guys for having us today. We, you know, glad to present on the, our system in general. So on climate change, on the gas side, we heard the gentleman from Eversource mention their replacement of leak-prone assets. That's something we've been doing as well systematically since the 90s. So we continue to replace our aging infrastructure to make sure we're addressing any, any potential for fugitive emissions. You don't tend to see us as frequently in Southampton because we didn't gain the territory rights for Southampton until the late 80s. So it's actually a newer system, it's very well protected. So we actually don't have any aging infrastructure that's considered leak-prone in this territory. That said, one of the things we also do to help reduce our impact to climate change is we do leak surveys annually for the full system. They're only required every three years, but obviously with our commitment to a clean energy and, you know, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, if there's something wrong with the system, we want to address it on a very aggressive manner. We also have an aggressive leak repair program as well that at the end of each year, we don't carry any leaks forward into the new year. So as they come in, we're repairing them to mitigate any risks associated with that as well. Jim did mention, you know, we are committed to our energy efficiency programs. You may know if anybody has kids in the school, we actually have a gentleman who comes to the schools each year, talks to kids, talks about electric safety, gas safety, but also promotes energy efficiency. Just giving them a little things that they can do to reduce, you know, any of their energy consumption. We also have the gentleman speak with the members of the, at the senior center. So we continue to promote these messages, try to get out there. Anything we can do to reduce any energy consumption across the area, you know, obviously helps achieve the, the end game result for reducing our emissions and providing a cleaner future. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything in my notes here. Yeah, and then, you know, the next question was kind of what our long-term goals are, what our long-term plans are to significantly, significantly reduce the, the impacts. You know, our plan obviously is to comply with the state's goal of by 2050. And we have the targets by 2030, 2040. So, you know, the target is 50% reduce our emissions by, from 1990 levels by 2030. We've currently are already reduced our emissions by 29% since that level. So we still have some gains to be made, obviously by 2030. But again, since the 90s, we've, we've continued to promote our, 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 sorry. We continue to promote any efforts we can to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So the other item that I kind of want to note on that is, is, you know, the other thing that's been helpful is, is as we gain the territory rights for Southampton, that's actually allowed us to allow customers who have been consuming oil or propane, which are dirtier fuels, allowed them to transition over and, you know, reduce their, reduce their carbon footprint in an economical manner. That's the other part that comes into it is, is, you know, we want to do things that are economically viable. So at the end of the day, the, the customer who comes in and out of their pockets, you know, it matters. So we have to do things that make sense financially for the, the ratepayers as well. And by providing the solution, it's helped to reduce emissions to the region and allow customers to afford a clean, you know, more, a cleaner energy. And then the other item is, you know, the other thing we're still seeing is, is, you know, we do have the moratorium unfortunately. We are still receiving requests and we're still tracking them. We've been receiving requests from customers in Southampton who still want to convert from dirtier fuels. And so we're maintaining a database so that as we continue to evaluate the solutions that will help us address the moratorium, we can go back to those customers and, you know, work with them on a solution that can help them reduce their, reduce their carbon footprint and reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. You know, the, the moratorium obviously isn't an ideal solution for anyone. You know, it remains a priority for us. So we continue to evaluate options that can help us lift it, you know, in a manner that, you know, makes sense and is economically viable, but also still helps us achieve our greenhouse gas and clean energy goals by 2050.
Just on that point, on the moratorium as it relates to Southampton, you know, where do you see that five, 10, 15 years out? I mean, do you see it kind of like, we're just going to stay here at this moratorium and as a customer rolls off, we can roll a new customer on? Or do you actually, can you kind of project out, without telling the future, are you able to project out that, you know, possibly in seven years, we're not going to be as hindered as we are by the current moratorium because of things that you may have in the works behind the scenes?
So I can't give anything in terms of a concrete date or anything along those lines. You know, since we've instituted the moratorium, it's been obviously a priority for us to evaluate options, try to find a solution that works, you know, and it's one of those that we continue to evaluate options. The Hoyoke City Council issued an order earlier this year, you know, requiring us to look at any solutions, you know, that are going to be deemed viable for helping lift the moratorium. So it's not just us who's evaluating it, you know, our, the local city council in Hoyoke obviously also views this as a priority. So we continue to evaluate options. We've been, you know, we're looking to see kind of what makes sense, what can fit within the program. But even if we find a solution that is determined viable because of the approval process necessary and the time to implement anything, once approvals are gained, anything that could potentially take place is still would be a minimum of at least two years out from, from implementation.
Is it a complete moratorium? At one point, it was my understanding that there were some customers, if there was gas that went, you know, close enough to your home that the homeowner might pay, you know, the, the hookup and that sort of thing. And that there were certain builders, depending on the circumstances, if they took it upon themselves to, you know, pay for the actual gas to go into the development that. So is it a complete moratorium and it is, is it across the board? It's not just Southampton, obviously.
Correct, yes, it's, it's a complete moratorium, it's across the board for both of our territories. The builder portion of it, that was more for new developments that if we didn't have, back when we did not have the moratorium, if there was an infrastructure in the area, if they helped cover the costs that then could help us produce a favorable return of investment, then we would be able to extend gas to those communities. But since the moratorium has been instituted, unfortunately, it's been across the board.
Just to clarify, who set the moratorium?
We set the moratorium.
So HG&E?
Hoyoke Gas and Electric, yes.
Set the moratorium on all, on its territory?
Correct, yes.
So we were forced to set the moratorium because the lack of pipeline capacity in the area. I mean, there's been no additional pipeline capacity into our region for quite some time. I mean, we're talking, you know, years and years. But at the same time, we've had exponential growth in gas usage. So, you know, and our, our concern is in the winter, a design day of the winter, you know, that we're taking everything that's available on the pipeline, but the heating demand is well in excess of the pipeline capacity. So we're fortunate, we have a liquid natural gas storage facility in West Hoyoke that we're able to draw upon during a peak winter day that takes almost half of our load, about 40% of our load on a, you know, peak heating day. So that's not a good balance. We like to have a little bit more degree of freedom there, you know, reliability, headroom anyway. But getting back, you know, Brian mentioned the city council, you know, passed an order encouraging us to do whatever we can to lift the moratorium. But we were well on our way, you know, we hesitated until the last minute or we couldn't avoid it any further to set the moratorium. But one of the odd things is, you know, the moratorium is set because there's a lack of pipeline capacity. But the impacts are that we have economic development opportunities that we're not able to assist the city with or your town with. And we have people that are in oil or propane that are 30, 50% more emissions than natural gas that we can't help. So natural gas is going to be, it has to be a bridge to help us to get to net zero. And so we're working very hard. Brian mentioned we're working on a few different options and we hope that we might have a partial lift of a moratorium in the near future. But I don't think we're going to see a full lift for two, three years on a best-case scenario.
And again, just for those at home, it's not a local issue that's driving this. It's the, it's the gas supply line coming from somewhere in the southern region, coming up through the gates to get into your system.
Yeah, there are several regions, that's correct. Several regions in Massachusetts are under moratoria right now. And we're served off the Northampton lateral that was formerly, well, it's Tennessee Gas. And they serve Hoyoke Westfield, formerly Columbly, but now Eversource. So, you know, Hoyoke, East Hampton, Northampton, Amherst, all the areas served off the Northampton lateral are subject to a natural gas moratorium right now.
What is, what is the, the percentage of coverage HG&E has for Southampton? How?
There's 1,100 in customers.
Yeah, we have about 1,100 residential customers.
1,100?
Yeah. Electric and gas or?
No, it's 1,100 of gas customers. We have 139 the electric customers. Those electric customers are only off of County Road between Bloomer and Luntre Street. After that, it's obviously Eversource's territory.
Okay, so just to repeat that, because nobody, so 1,100 gas customers, residential customers here in Southampton and 139 off of County Road, Bloomer, Bloomer Road area? That are for electric for you guys, okay.
I'm sure there's a lot of people that would switch to gas if it was available. And I'm one of them. I have a development that when it was built was all electric and then electric shot up and then everybody switched to gas. I had oil as the last house built and now I can't switch to gas.
Yeah, well, we're hopefully, hopefully be able to help you in the near future.
So too. Well, I'm hoping.
That would be great because you have to go by my house to get to your house.
I just hope that with the, with the increase, hopefully funding federally for all these target goals for reducing emissions, that maybe there will be some opportunity to get funding to.
Right, I mean, combination with the climate change goals exactly at the federal level as well as the infrastructure bills and so forth that are passing, you know, theoretically out of, out of Washington, maybe some of that will get to ourselves at some point in time.
And I also, I also remember back when this all happened, that there was a lot of, I think on our side of the table, being the elected officials, it's important to know that this isn't because they want to put a bigger pipe down College Highway. I mean, it's really the restriction is at the gates and what's coming in and understanding the bigger picture.
Right.
And, and being supportive for the very reasons that we just stated, you know, to drive these down.
Right, good.
Yeah, and, and we need the natural gas in addition to help us with the electrification because if everybody was willing and able to go to electric, you know, heating and transportation tomorrow, our distribution system is not capable of supporting that. So we're, we're looking at just a small system like HG&E for the electric grid upgrades on the distribution system, well over $150 million. So, you know, we're going to be looking very closely at these funding opportunities to see what assistance is available to help offset that.
Okay, good.
So I know along those lines, switching back to electricity, one of the things that we're contemplating on our side for fiber optics is, is voting in an MLP, municipal light plant for the fiber side. But once that's voted in, that would not prohibit, the way I understand the law that we would adopt, it doesn't prevent us from creating our own municipal light plant outside of the costs associated to do that. So without putting you on the spot, being where you are, abutting us, already servicing 139 resident houses within the town, should we go that far, would there ever be a possibility for you to expand your franchise slash monopoly outside of Hoyoke to take on a subdivision or a sub-department of Southampton? And basically, we're an MLP, we contract with you versus Eversource to be the electric provider within town? Or is it a dead issue?
No, it's not a dead issue and I want to, you know, make it clear that I'm not an attorney. But the, you know, the enabling statute is chapter, Mass General Law is chapter 164. And once an MLP is, well, we can serve an adjoining community as long as we're invited to. You know, there's a reciprocity provision in the statute as amended in 1997 that requires, or that states that if we just came here and served and started picking off customers from Eversource, that they could do the same for our territory. Now, we're not concerned about that because our rates, I mean, one of the drives, in addition to being aggressive at reducing our carbon footprint, we've been, you know, loyal to our goal of keeping the costs competitive. So, I mean, from a rate standpoint, it's, they're not. they're not comparable. Um, so we wouldn't be concerned today about that, but it would be, the, the statute also requires that if you set up an MLP and you want to get into the electric business, you have to purchase the poles and wires. So that, that would be a hurdle, but not, you know, moving mountains perhaps.
Right. Interesting. Okay. Good. All right. Unless there's any other questions? We, thank you. Or you've got more to say? I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Did we cover everything that you wanted to hear from us tonight?
These are the main questions, I think. Yeah.
Okay. Well, again, I, I thank you very much for inviting us and we really appreciate working with the town.
Great to meet you and, and have a face-to-face and get an idea of what really does happen behind the scenes here. So.
Likewise. And we're available at any time if you ever have questions or concerns.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, let us move on with our agenda. We'll get through these first couple of things and then we'll get to the new business and we'll maybe reorder some of the new business since we have folks in the audience that probably don't need to sit here all night long. But let us, uh, move on to the very next thing, which is a town administrator report. So Ed, we'll turn it over to you, please.
Sure. And actually, I should have put it on here, but, uh, one, one reminder, if the select board members would please make sure that they do talk into your microphones. We're having some issues with trying to just transcribe some of the minutes of trying to actually identify who may have made motions or seconds or whatever. So just a friendly reminder. Thank you. Let's see. Just to let you know, the auditors should now have all the reports and information that they have previously requested from the town for the fiscal year 21 audit. Um, they may have some follow-up questions, but everything they asked for, they now have. Uh, we have been approached by two young ladies who are Southampton residents that are in their junior year of high school at Hampshire Regional. Uh, they are both looking for 30 hours of community service projects to perform during the month of September. Uh, if you have any thoughts or ideas, please let me know. I'm sure we would be happy to put them to work for some community service projects. Um, let's see. As a follow-up to a question from the select board, uh, a few meetings ago, the website redesign, uh, redesigned proposed contract for Final Site was for a five-year contract for the annual support cost of $5,500 per year. Uh, they would do a three-year contract, but the support cost per year would increase to 5750 per year for those three years. Um, does the select board have a preference as to which company we proceed with and if we should proceed with a three-year contract or wait for a special town meeting to request approval for a five-year contract? And just, uh, to go over some of the background again, because the last two, uh, technology committees, uh, have been canceled because of lack of a quorum, uh, is when Civic Plus changed their, uh, shall we say how they put the, their proposal, uh, because they changed their, uh, how they, how they charge, uh, for, uh, both the upfront cost and, uh, the yearly support costs, uh, it came much closer to Final Site's, uh, cost, uh, going forward for a support per year. The technology committee felt that Final Site was a much better product, uh, that would be much more user-friendly for our departments or department heads to make some changes to. Um, and actually, I talked to, uh, the town of Athol, who was actually, is currently changing from Civic Plus to Final Site. But because of the fact that the last two committee meetings have been canceled, I've been trying to get, I wanted to get a feel from them if this is something that they'd rather go to a three-year contract and move, move forward fairly quickly, um, and pay the extra $250 a year for the three years, um, or wait for a special town meeting where we could put a question on it of can we do, you know, can we have approval for a five-year contract? So, um, trying to, trying, trying to cut to the chase and maybe get to a decision quicker than waiting for-
Yeah. Do we have any-
Technology Committee, I was wondering if the select board-
First thoughts here?
Had, had any, you know, preferences of how they might like to see us move forward with this?
I mean, I think it's really more our, I mean, we've got the recommendation from tech, but I mean, I think it's really up to us in terms of the money aspect of things of how we want to approach this, but.
What's the money in the budget for this year for website design?
Well, actually, this is, uh, would be through one of the ARPA approvals, uh, which would cover the redesign, uh, and that, uh, first, first year.
What was that dollar amount? Do you remember?
And I'm trying to, we, of course, I got my laptop here. Let me go plug it in.
No, I've got it on my laptop. Hang on.
And actually-
The issue's going to be just the recurring cost.
Well, actually, you know what? If I go to the fiscal year 23 year expense report, it's going to tell me what its budget has. Give me a minute. I'll just try to find the correct expense report. Darn it. I'm not going to get to it. Okay, 23.
Oh, actually, wait a minute.
What did I do? 22.
Yeah. It was, um, 15,125, I believe. Does that sound right?
Well, I'm looking for the actual.
Yeah.
What do you mean for approved by?
Under, under ARPA, we approved, uh, for the town website redevelopment, 15,125.
Okay. For this, for this year, if you're trying to figure out what going forward, the 5,750 dollar difference would be, for this year, and webpage maintenance, we have budgeted $3,500. So it would be additional 2,750.
That would come from ARPA. That would come from ARPA, correct or no?
Wasn't really, basically what we, uh, what I had, what I had requested, and I suppose you can also tell me, why don't you amend your request, is, um, I had originally requested to cover the cost of the redesign and one year of support.
First year. Yeah.
For, you know, what would be the, the current year. So.
What was the redesign number? Do you know? Because it's 15,125, so it's obviously like 10,000?
They, Final Site does it a little differently and that's one of the reasons their support cost is a little higher. Uh, they didn't, they don't-
Separate them?
They don't, yeah, they don't really charge for a redesign cost. It's just-
Oh, so they just spread it over the years?
They have the highest, yeah, they have the higher support cost.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Whereas Civic Plus actually charged a, uh, specific redesign fee and then a support fee.
So just, just so I'm clear in my head, $3,500 was passed in the budget. Anything above 3,500, in theory, has to come from ARPA because we have to name the funding source if we're going to vote on something, correct?
Correct.
And within the ARPA, we allocated $15,000.
15,000 for this conversion of the site and the first year of maintenance or some updating.
So 15,000 plus the 3,500 that's sitting in the budget right now.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Gives us an all-in of 1,850.
I, the way I would understand that, yeah. And I keep in mind too, that the website right now is not being updated. I mean, it's, you know, we have, when we have needs, we're sending it, no, but we're sending, we're posting things as we need to, but it's not a regular-
And we're not doing it internally.
Right. Update, nothing is internal.
And all has to be sent out.
A person helping us on the outside doing it. So it's, it's really not efficient.
So don't we have enough money if it's 17,250? I mean, to go with a three-year contract? Between the, I mean, 15,125 and 3,700 is 1,850.
Well, don't, don't forget, as we go further into this year, until we actually convert, we're still paying-
Still paying some of that, right.
That cost to update the website. So there'll be, there'll be less than 3,500 dollars there. Probably might be half of it.
But I mean, it only comes to 17,250.
Right. Because we'll have, we'll probably have, it would be like maybe a six-month or so conversion possibly?
Probably, it, it's probably going to be around, yeah, four to six months.
Four to six months. So we've got some of the current costs that we're going to have to be incurring anyway until we get to that point. Right?
So, Ed, I don't know this, I don't know the answer to this question, um, from procurement point of view. So it's, because we want to do a three-year instead of a five-year, it's a 1,250 dollar adjustment, right? 250 dollars a year times five is what they're saying and they want to recoup.
250 times three, 750.
They would do a three-year.
But if we did the five-year?
Yeah.
It would be 5,500. If we do the three, it's 5,750. So 250 times three, okay. So 750 they're trying to recoup, right? According to your interpretation of procurement law and your understanding of the bylaws, could we push back and ask for a three-year contract with two one-year extensions and preserve the cost? Does that violate state statute and the bylaw at all?
Interesting idea.
I would, I, in my interpretation, and I would want to double check on that, but my interpretation would be that would still be equivalent to a five-year contract.
Fair enough.
Okay. But could we do it pending approval of a town meeting?
Well, you do a five-year for, for a town meeting, but three-year you don't-
Right. But we do the three, but then by the, you know, I mean, we could do the extension, but if they, if the town doesn't vote for it, then we include that in a contract with them saying, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead and do this with two years pending approval by town meeting.
I see.
I can ask.
Can try and find out. Yeah.
I think that's what I would-
Yeah. I mean, I think personally, my, my preference would be to try and get it done sooner rather than later. I think we've been talking about it for a long time and, you know, we, we're not sure, you know, we probably will have a special town meeting. We don't know when, whether, you know, it would be in November or it could be in February. I mean, we don't really know what our date is yet in terms of what the issues are that we need to have, have before the voters. So the longer we delay, I mean, I'm-
Read on.
Hoping that we can, we can come up with the money for the, I think it's really important to have good information out there for the residents. So, John?
Yeah.
John, you were going to say something?
Sure.
You look like you were going to say something. Go ahead.
I am. I just need a second to do the math.
Oh, he's going to do the math. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, that would be my preference. Three years with a two extension pending approval by town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
If there's a way to do that.
So I, I think we pursue, pursue two parallel paths. And, and the first one is, is what Rainey is saying, is that ultimately, we would prefer to go with the five-year contract, but statutorily, we need town, um, town meeting approval to do that. So in the interim, to move the, move the ball along, I would motion to approve the three-year contract, 5,750 annually for three years, total of three-year contract of 17,250 to be funded 100% by ARPA funds, with our intent is to seek town approval, town, or town committee approval, town vote approval for the five-year at 5,500 and then ask for the adjustment should we be successful in obtaining that vote.
Ask them to modify the contract that we enter.
Yeah, we want the five. We, we need the citizens to approve it.
Yes.
We're going to go and do that. But short, even if that fails, we, we're going to take the three-year at the higher price. The funding source to be ARPA funds, the budgeted money of the 3,000 and change to pay for the ongoing support costs that's happening now. Anything left over on that would fall out to free cash and be certified.
I support that, except for why wouldn't you at least try to get the 5,500 instead? Why wouldn't you just go for the original three, five, what would be five-year?
Well, I am, but I'm, but I'm saying, I suggest to the vendor that if we fail, we're still going to take the three-year at 5,750. So they don't need to wait for the vote. They can start the process now, knowing at the very least, they have the three years at 5,750. We want to get the five-year at 5,500, but we need town vote approval.
So you're saying that when we get the vote, if we do, then they would-
There'd be an adjustment in billing.
Adjust the entire thing so that the end result would be a five-year contract at-
5,500 per year.
Right.
If they're agreeable to it.
And you think that would be a better sell than just trying to get the three-year at the lower rate impending?
I think for 250 dollars a year, I think they would have just given it to us if they didn't really need it.
They'd be more likely to say yes, obviously.
Well, I think too, if, if we had to go back and adjust our ARPA decision, right? To add two more, if I'm hearing us, we put up for the conversion plus one year. So what we, what you're saying is put the other two years under ARPA as well?
Well, we approved 15,000 and change, right?
Right.
So we're only short by 2,000. 17,150.
You mean, so we would fund three years worth of ARPA?
Well, yeah, I was going to say, we've got a limited time by when we-
My understanding is if we commit the money by December of '24-
Right.
And spend it by December of '26.
26 is our last expansion.
Why wouldn't be used, I mean, we're going to, I mean, right now, the line item in the budget is 3,700 for three, I mean, we could, I mean, we're not going to take it away.
The only reason why I'm suggesting not to use that is we don't know the, worst-case scenario, it takes six months for the conversion. How many charges are we going to have between now and then for changes that we have to pay? Like, if it was going to be a one-month window and we knew we only spent 500 so far, we're only going to spend another 500, which left 2,500, then I'd be willing to commit that. But I, I don't want to hear in two months like, well, you've committed that money, so now we can't do any more changes. Just to leave both open. And if we don't spend the budget money, it'll fall out as free cash and get recertified.
Yeah. Okay. Does that-
I, I like that idea.
Everybody? Does that make sense?
I don't know if I have to repeat my motion, but.
Oh, well, can shorten it maybe? No.
Did you catch it all, Ed?
I've caught the pertinent parts of it. Yes.
And you think they'll be willing to readjust down after the three years so that it comes out to the 5,500 a year?
I can only, I can only ask.
Yeah. Well, I think that that's going to be the tough part.
Subject to their acceptance.
Yeah. And if they don't accept it, we've got-
They have to be willing to do that though, and someone needs to be like on it to make sure it happens. And if they don't accept it, then we've got at least the three-year one to keep, keep going, to get going, rather.
Correct. Yeah.
This is one of those things where if someone's not paying attention in year four, it's not going to happen.
Right. Right. No, it's true.
Well, but, but we don't have to wait the three years. We only have to wait until the special town meeting.
Right. Right. But when the budget is-
To extend the two additional years.
When the budget is done, someone has to realize, oh, by the way-
Yeah. I also, I also-
Be washed out by year four.
I also, I also have faith that our town accountant, if we spell it out in the minutes and we give it to him, part of his job is to, to sign off on these things to make sure that they're complying with it. So I, I hear you. I understand. And we're talking about the future and things could change, but.
It's going to be a whole different group of people and that's what, that's the problem is who's going to make sure that this drops down or that there's going to, they're going to be, the adjustment is going to be about 750 dollars or more. I just, you know, I have, I have concerns about that happening. Is there a way to make that a firmer?
Is there a way to have like a, I don't know, a side letter, a memo to the file, something or other to, to-
Or resigning every year.
I would, I would anticipate again, again, I mean, we're, we're wording the motion in such a way that they have to accept exactly what we're saying. So I would assume that that would be an amendment to the contract and would spell it all out and be attached to it. That then becomes part of the permanent record. Because again, we're just making the motion. We're not saying they're going to agree to it. They're going to have to agree in writing-
Correct. Yeah.
To the, to your point, to an amendment or, or a, a, a-
Modification.
Schedule A, modification to the contract, which we will, which then has to come back to us for signature. So if it's not there-
Why wouldn't we try to, why wouldn't we try to at least, if the town meeting happens in the fall, why wouldn't we at least try to adjust it by year two?
So pay the 5,750. Yeah, I'd be all in favor of adjusting as soon as we pass it.
As soon as we can. Yeah.
As soon as we pass it, we adjust it.
Yeah. Why don't we just do that? Pay the 5,750 for the first year and that will, will pay a higher amount, um, for three years if it doesn't pass. And if it does pass, as soon as year two, drop it down to 5,500. That's going, I feel more confident that that's going to actually happen.
So perhaps I reword the motion to approve 5,750 annually for three years in the event and simultaneously seek special town meeting approval to go to a five-year contract at 5,500. But should that fail, we will, we will stay committed to the 5,750 for three years.
And if it approves, then we would switch to the-
We, we adjust upon-
The 5,500 for year two. Yes.
Yes.
We're going to, we're going to promise the 5,750 year one.
We're going to move right to the lower amount as soon as it's approved or by year two.
Adjust it. Okay. I think we're on the same-
With a, with a 250 dollar credit.
Right. We'll remember that.
Yeah.
Okay. That might be a little bit better for them too.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. I think we got it. All right. Good. All right. Long motion, but I think we got it.
Speak into the mic.
All right. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
All right. Aye. I think that one passes. Thanks, Ed. I think we'll-
That was only letter C.
Move on that. Yeah.
Can I go back on to B for one second with the young folks that are wanting to do some community service? Are there any restrictions, like, in terms of Cory? Is there anything in terms of senior center or schools or anything that?
It depends on what we.
Where, okay.
Yeah, what that project would be.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you. Fiscal year twenty-two revenue report is now complete with revenue receipts through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Do we have that?
Yes.
We do? Okay, thank you.
Well, we know John didn't read his package.
Nope.
Just to let you know, Gilaher is scheduled to reseed the area adjacent to the new Route Ten sidewalk between Pomeroy Meadow Road and High Street this fall. Ideally, they are waiting for some lower temperatures and some rain in the forecast to help the grass seed grow and mature once that's done. And they will hydroseed this time. Barbara Golden submitted her notice of retirement letter to the Southampton Board of Library Trustees today. Also, April West has also submitted a letter of resignation from the Board of Assessors effective September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. This will be an agenda item for the next select board meeting agenda. And also to let you know that the mechanic in the Highway Department has also submitted his notice of resignation.
That's the person we just hired?
Recently hired, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct. Chiefillingsworth has reached out to me asking if there will be a special town meeting during the fall/winter months. His overtime budget has been utilized more than anticipated due to, to the staffing issues, and he wanted to know if there would be a special town meeting so that he would be able to request a, uh, warrant article to transfer, transfer a fund from the Police Department regular wage account to the overtime account to balance that uses, usage off without having to plan to reduce the number of officers scheduled for a shift to make up that difference.
Just a question, a question on that. Do we, do we have a date or a week anticipated that on current burn rate that that funding will run out?
No, my usual expectations is January, February, unless something comes up before that.
We used to have it a little bit earlier, too.
What the meeting is.
But if they're asking for the fall.
The rate of.
That is, that tells me that the, the department head's thinking he, they may run out in September, October, based on current.
Yeah.
No, I have fall/winter here because that's traditionally when the special town meeting is.
But he's asking when Ian may be out of his money.
To therefore set the date.
Yeah.
Ian Elingsworth, Police Chief, I, I'm currently, um, uh, I should be about a quarter spent. I'm a third spent. So it almost doubled, but no, I, I can certainly make it. It, I'm, the light is at the end of the tunnel. I can see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that things will be resolved mid-October. However, what this causes for is this unanticipated, um, uh, overtime. It prevents sending officers to professional development, certain professional development and so forth. So, yes, the, the answer is I have enough until, um, you know, winter and, or late fall. Certainly have enough by then. But the, for me, I just wanna make sure that there is a meeting going to be scheduled.
Yeah.
So I can ask for those transfers, interdepartmental transfers.
Okay, got it.
And what is the driver for when that, um, special town meeting, it can't happen until after what? I mean, we're not worried about?
Usually, we won't do one until after free cash is certified, so we can, uh, basically do the distribution, distribution on that. But.
Right.
Then again, if something pops up that, you know, we needed to do something by a certain date for a grant or something, you know, that can move that forward a little bit.
Right.
Okay.
When will that be submitted to the state, our report, in order to get certified? You have any ideas, projections?
Well, basically, when the books are closed, it's usually, again, around that.
Twenty-two.
No November, December timeframe.
Okay.
Then thank you to Randall Kemp for trimming the town hall bushes today. The other department employees will be here on Friday to finish that cleanup.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I thought certain select board members had mentioned it. I had noticed it, and I thought since on September sixth, we'd probably be having a, hopefully a decent amount of our residential voters come to the building that.
Yes.
It would look nicer that way. A reminder that early voting for the state primary is taking place in the Town Clerk's Office on Wednesday, August thirty-first, from eight-thirty a.m. to four p.m. Thursday, September first, from eight-thirty a.m. to four p.m., and by appointment only on Friday, September second. Please call, call the Town Clerk's Office at four one three five two seven eight three nine two by the end of the day on Thursday, September first, to make an appointment for early voting on Friday, September second. And that's just the dates going forward. I didn't report on the dates that was available already that have already passed. And then for your information, follow-up information for the TIF agreement with J and E Precision for the parcel at one fifteen Valley Road. Basically, for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, the valuation and the tax paid, twenty eighteen valuation zero, tax paid zero. Twenty nineteen, valuation was eighty-seven nine, the tax paid was fourteen seventy-six and sixty-six cents. In twenty twenty, the valuation was a hundred and fifty-three, a hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars, and the taxes paid were two thousand five hundred and six dollars and eleven cents. In twenty twenty-one, the valuation increased to two hundred nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars, and the taxes paid were three thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. And, and fiscal year twenty-two, the valuation increased to two hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred dollars, and the taxes which were paid were four thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and eleven cents. And then upcoming select board meetings, September thirteenth and twenty-seventh, and then the state primary election is on September sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody have any questions of Ed on this?
I'll second the thank you to the Highway Department on the bushes out front. So in terms of the TIF agreement, so this basically is consistent with the TIF agreement?
Yes.
So it's, they're at eighty percent valuation right now?
For twenty twenty-three, they'll be at eighty percent valuation, correct?
Yep.
And then for twenty twenty-four, it'll be at a hundred.
So I don't have any questions, but I have two statements or comments to make. The first off is, I understand Pat's practices and how we've always handled things, and we should strive to do better. And this is probably, this is definitely not the year to do it. But the goal is, and the state is very clear, that free cash certification needs to be done by September thirtieth, not November or December. Again, I get where we're coming from, and we should strive to do better. Increasing Fridays for our Finance Department probably is unrealistic goal for this year, but next year, there should be no excuse to meet the, meet the deadline. Two, understanding all the issues that we've had in the Police Department and the Police Reform Act and the struggles that are going on there, you know, I'm not comfortable waiting around for things to happen and, and potentially run into issues of training and continuing education, whether or not that covers the Bridge Academy or not, to put us in, in deeper constraints. And we're talking about money within the old department. Yes, we only budgeted for so many special town meetings, but if we're waiting for free cash, which is going to be November, December, then I can hear, well, we don't wanna meet in the winter because we're gonna be inside, so now we're gonna be into January, February before we actually meet. You know, at, at some point, we just need to get our act together. And I don't think, and it doesn't sound like we're at that level yet, but I would, as a select board member, I would be very concerned if we got to a point where we're creating public safety at risk because we're waiting for the Finance Department to figure out how to do free cash. I'm very happy that we have the revenue numbers in, um, as we requested, and that's great. And I have no, I have every confidence that going forward, they're gonna be timely and submit them, but we, but we've gotten to this point. We need to continue to push this so that we can stay on the schedule that all the other cities and towns follow or, or try to follow.
I agree a hundred percent. And we also had an audit last year that was, we hired a company to do the audit. So we should be further ahead of the game than we.
Yeah.
Are. And I, I don't, I think we should back into this, and we should have a target for when we would want to have a special town meeting.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I wanna be clear, as, as much as I'm advocating for public safety here, I also wanna publicly say that I think the Finance Team is doing a fabulous job. With Bradley being new and Jennifer, a, a point in time being short-staffed and coming up with it, they're doing great. But it, we've got, we've gotta push through that extra mile right now to get ahead of the curve. And at some point, these things need to get off the town administrator's radar.
Yep.
He's got more things to do in this town than just focus on finance, 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 although it's a very important part.
Okay. Good to know. Let's pick up the discussion in the next meeting and talk about some possible dates and that kind of timeframes for a special town meeting. Okay?
Right.
Point taken. Okay, do we have a couple of quick select board reports? Anything major that's happened with anybody's committees? Reading anything?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. CPC hasn't met, no meeting planned. Public Safety Building Committee met last night reviewing the RFQ. They're meeting again in two weeks on the twelfth of September to refinish up the RFQ. Then they're gonna ask for a subsequent meeting with the Select Board, similar to what the Senior Center did, for the purposes of reviewing the RFQ. COA Building Feasibility Committee has a meeting Thursday night. The two finalists for the RFQ, one is Abacus, is doing a presentation at four o'clock. One is EDM, is doing a presentation at six o'clock. With the COA Building Feasibility Committee meeting, it's open to the public. It'll be in this room, and that's where they're at. They expect to select a firm, you know, pending references and all that, very soon. COA hasn't met since the last meeting. However, I just wanna let you know there was an event yesterday in the Senior Center with Senator DeVillas and an aide from, with Kelly Pease's office. They helped secure fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funds specifically for the, um, COA, and it was a great event. It was on twenty-two last night. You can check the link. They have a nice clip on that. Joan Lenhen did a great job on TV. There's currently a volunteer coordinator position open, and I mentioned Officer Grober did a presentation to, to the COA Board on the reassurance program. We're still trying to get the word out. There's gonna be an article, I think, this week in the Paper Gazette, and I know that the Reminder is also gonna be doing a presentation. And also, there's a Financial Elder Abuse Program on the fourteenth of September at the Southampton Country Club. It'll be from twelve to two, and you have to call the Senior Center to sign up for that, but it'll be a presentation by the Sheriff's Office, our Police Chief, and also the DA, and sponsored or supported by the Polish National Credit Union. The next meeting for the COA is the seventh of September. And Board of Assessors met last week on the twenty-third. They are reviewing an application, one applicant for the PA position. They continue to do the work of the office. They're doing a great job. And just so you know, April West, her resignation is because she's moving out of Southampton, unfortunately. So we will have a position available on the Board of Assessors. Just wanna thank April also for all of her incredible work on the board. And what else? The next meeting of the Board of Assessors is Tuesday, September sixth, at four p.m. So I also attended the Board of Health meeting, so I'm gonna bring up the notes from that meeting. I went for, that was held over at Corner Park on the seventeenth of August. I think the biggest information is that Nicole Fletcher has resigned as the Health Agent effective September first, which is this week. She'll make sure that all the food establishments are inspected before she leaves. She's gonna stay on as an animal inspector, and I hope also fence counter, that is a stipend amount, the animal inspector, so that won't necessarily change. Jerry has asked Charlie Kinnick to do some Health Agent work as a vendor. I did just, you know, I did follow up with Kate Swistak-Rooks and also Francine, just to remind them that, um, my understanding is that when someone's hired as a vendor, it doesn't come out of the wage line. It comes out of the expense line, and there's not a lot of money in that account. So they also would have to either bring them in as a temporary emergency employee, because there's no way, regardless of when our special town meeting is, that there'll be money in that line to cover the Health Agent duties for long. Um, let's see. They, the Board of Health signed that there's no longer case tracing needed in town hall. And so I saw an email that Jerry had sent out to let people know about that. I did pass along to the Select Board, I mean, the Board of Health, just the comment that was made about the Water Department, that would like to hear from the Water Department about water capacity and also, um, building in town. There was a discussion about monkey parks. And Northampton is the center for helping with that. There was also a discussion about the splash pad and the water situation in terms of, um, the concern about that, that they're in the design phase of that. There was a COVID vaccine clinic that day. There were only three vaccines administered. They anticipate having a flu clinic in the fall. Kate shared some mosquito report data. Obviously, one good thing about the drought is that the, there's been a low incidence of mosquitoes and mosquito-borne illnesses. Kate reported on a Blueprint for Health Excellence Grant, and they're working on raising standards and better communication between the districts in the Shared Services Grant. So I think that's about it.
All right.
There is another meeting of the Board of Health. It's specifically on Zoom, and it's to sign a contract with Charlie Kinnick, and that is?
September sixth.
September sixth.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Renzo?
Well, I wanna thank Rainey for sitting in for me at the Board of Health meetings. A lot of good information. Thank you. I, just to mention, that I had no meetings in between, but to mention that tomorrow morning at ten o'clock, the Bylaws Committee is meeting right in this room. Thank you.
John?
I don't think I can be shorter than that. So PPPB met last week. We had a schedule conflict, so we didn't meet on the third Thursday. Every single item that we brought up at that night will be on tonight's agenda, so I won't go into that. We have another conflict with, it's just the way the calendar's working with our September meeting. We pushed it out to the fourth, um, Thursday, and one of our members, not me, has a conflict with that. So right now, we don't have a meeting in September that we're gonna be able to hold unless we move it around. So I just throw that out, and I realize this is on everybody's radar. It would really be great if we could identify a third member to put on that committee, so that if one of us could be absent and, and the committee could still meet. The Greenways Committee did meet after that meeting, but I was, I wasn't able to attend that as I attended the, the local debate over in Northampton. And then, while I'm not the liaison, I will just inform the committee as a whole, in my capacity as Chair of Norris, that as Chair, um, certain things have come to light, and I've requested an executive session of the Norris School Committee, and for public meeting purposes, I have invited the Chair of the Select Board into that meeting. Again, it's executive session. I can't have the whole Select Board in there, but just to the extent that I can disclose it, um, we, we have that coming up in two, next Wednesday, and discuss that. And I assume that there will, there will be more information coming out later when it's appropriate to do so.
Can I ask you only because it was in the paper about changes in the business office?
At Central Office?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. So we, we've had, I, I think, one of them's been reported here before. So there's been two departures within Central Office. One of them is our IT Director, and we had a meeting this morning of the five chairs up at Hampshire Regional. The update on that is, and I'm, the name is escaping me, but the district has entered into a ninety day, uh, contract with a vendor. And the cost of that is, is less than what the, the IT Director's salary was for an evaluation, and part of that is to do an evaluation. We've received feedback from several other communities where this vendor is used for the IT services. And then on top of that, our business administrator has announced that she is leaving. After many, many years of, of oil service to the district, she is, our loss is someone else's gain. She's going to Northampton as their business administrator. Her last day in the district will be September twenty-ninth. There is an active recruitment going on for that position, but as of yet, no, no candidate has been identified.
Thanks, okay. Lots of movement all over the place here. Yeah, okay. All right, just very briefly for me. We've got a Cost efficiencies meeting tomorrow afternoon on Zoom at three o'clock, and on Thursday, we've got a very short, um, Grant Committee meeting at two o'clock on Zoom, primarily to take a look at the Safe Roots to Schools grant that's opening up. It's open now, and its deadline is before the end of September. So we've got a short meeting to reconnoitre and see how we wanna approach that. But it looks like it's something we can apply for. It's a six thousand dollar grant, but definitely wanna try and take advantage of it if we can, if it makes sense to do something related to the school. Okay? That's about it. All right. Thanks, everybody, for all the reports, and again, attending all the meetings and being the representative back and forth here. Really takes a lot of extra time besides our long select board meetings. So thanks, So thanks, everybody, for keeping on with your liaison assignments. So let's move on to new business. We have quite a few here. And I know that we've got at least two people in the audience that have got some issues that they would like to bring up.
Do you want to do the resignations first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve three resignations. Nancy Russo resigning from the Council on Aging Board effective immediately. Again, want to thank all of them for their service. Carol Goulet resignation from being a library substitute. And Bob Barkum's resignation from the Greenway Committee.
Okay. We have a motion. Could we have a second on those resignations?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And thanks, everybody, for your service. I know everybody puts in a lot of extra time as volunteers, and we do appreciate that. So thanks for the time that you've been able to give to the town. All right. So now onto new business. Sorry, I skipped that at the bottom of my page there. So I'm seeing two. I'm picking, we have Open Space here, and we have Complete Streets. Is those the two that are sitting in the audience? And Ian, are you here for particular something?
If there's any concerns about the PCF that I see.
Okay. Okay. Well, if you feel like hanging out, I think we'll deal with this stuff. And Janet, anything?
No.
Okay. All right. I just want to be sure that we do that. So with everybody's approval, could we just take these a little bit out of order? And let's take one that might be the shorter of the two, I'm guessing. How about Cindy? Want to come up for Open Space and talk to us about your issue?
Thank you, Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. Open Space Committee Chairperson. You, Select Board members, will recall that you had a presentation from Kestrel Land Trust, Bridgette Likely, I think at your last meeting, talking about the fabulous opportunity our town has been able to hopefully enjoy regarding a partnership with Kestrel to enter into at least at this point, look at the feasibility of applying for a landscape partnership grant. That will mean conserving some large parcels in our town. It's a long process, a lot involved. The Open Space Committee has strongly supported this and is ready to go forward and do a lot of work with this. But I'm beginning to realize that we're a committee primarily of appointments. We only have one at-large committee. And I'm proposing, as you've seen in your packet, that there be a revision to the Open Space Committee charge, which was originally given to us in July of 2020. And if you have that before you all, I'm looking at specifically is the membership section, section one. And I'm going to just read my proposed revision. There shall be an Open Space Committee consisting of nine voting members, formerly seven, all of whom shall be residents of the town of Southampton. Five will be appointed by and representing the Planning Board, Community Preservation Committee, Select Board, Parks Commission, and Conservation Committee. More Commission. Four will be from the community at large, appointed by the Select Board. Now, within that proposal, we have eliminated a representative from the Assessors Board. The reason is, they are thin right now. They really are. I've talked with April, who has been wonderful on our committee. She hasn't always been able to attend. She went back to the Board of Assessors and asked, would there be somebody else to take on? There really is not at this point. On the other hand, they'll be available for consultation if necessary, which is really great. So I've eliminated that as an actual appointment and added, and we currently have an open at-large position because we had a resignation from Charlie McDonald, who did not want to be renewed. So again, what we're essentially doing is adding three at-large positions, removing the Assessors position, and filling the fourth, which is currently vacant. That's my proposal.
I know. When I was on the Open Space, having someone in Assessors was incredibly important.
Oh, it is. Absolutely.
Maps and data and all that kind of stuff. I'm just wondering if, are you can, I'm just wondering if the, someone from Assessors could still exist. I mean, we hope to get another person. We hope to get a principal assessor. Right now, it just seems to change the charge because of the, I mean, it should be based on whether or not the position is valuable to the committee. Can you increase the number of at-large, like you're doing to go to nine, and have enough, you know, not worry about a quorum and hope to fill it down the road?
It's a good idea, but I, we don't, right now, I'm concerned we don't have it.
I mean, are you having issues with quorum?
We have definitely had issues with quorum. We've had issues for several meetings with quorum, just based on our current charge.
But you're increasing the at-large members even without, you know, eliminating per se?
Which also means they're increasing the quorum requirement.
Yeah, the quorum would increase as well exponentially, right? I, I think if we got that, we, well, we could still, again, I'm suggesting there'd be a consultant. And that's been agreed to by the current Board of Assessors, that they would be available. Darcy Gasperini has been willing to be very helpful to us. Darcy has commitments that are conflicting. So I, it's just a reality.
Maybe the difference would be that the Board of Assessors as a consultant, but they could still be a member, but not a voting member? Would that be of any?
Well, would that affect our, well, it wouldn't affect our quorum if they were, I mean, what's the difference, really? You know?
Excessive number.
Right. I mean, right now, with seven members, you need four for a quorum. And going up to nine, you need five, right?
Yeah.
Well, my understanding is that the five appointed, one comes from Planning Board, one comes from Community Preservation Committee, one from Parks, one from Conservation.
And one from Select Board.
Yeah. And so that one from the Select Board, is it an existing Select Board member?
Yes, it is. Joy comes very regularly.
Like PPPB, that's one of our voting?
Right. One of the voting ones.
So I almost wonder if, I mean, because these are all, I mean, appointments. And one of the things is failure to elect puts the appointment on us. Do we scrap the Select Board person, make that the principal assessor, whoever that position is, that's, you're on there. And then the other four to be elected at-large by the town. If nobody stands for office, then it falls on the Select Board to appoint those positions and fill them.
And the Select Board would just be the liaison.
Correct. Non-voting member.
Non-voting member.
Unless the Select Board person ran for it.
We aren't.
But here, it's all appointments. So if, but you make it elected, it's open to the, and they're at-large, as it says, the whole town. If nobody runs for the office, then the duty falls to the Select Board to appoint the vacancies.
Well, but I, so you're saying that we would have Planning and Community Preservation, everybody be elected to the?
No, no, no. Those are appointments. And instead of appointing a Select Board member?
Yeah.
Scrap that.
Have five at-large.
Assessor. By virtue of the office they hold, they're on that committee. Keep in mind, you know, we just raised it to 60,000 and made it a salary. Here's the committee that you have to serve on, once we identify and hire somebody. That leaves four at-large. At-large, townwide election. If nobody stands for the office, by default, it comes to the Select Board to fill the vacancies.
They're not currently elected positions.
No, they're not.
What did you say? They're not what?
They're not currently elected positions.
Oh, correct. Not. It's all appointments.
Right.
Right. Which means that right now, under this provision, the Select Board gets five appointments.
That's correct.
Under the proposal.
That's correct.
Which would be a majority of that board. And seven, we would, I mean, of nine, we would control five of the votes. You'd have to have a little population.
And the benefit is, and the benefit of that is that the town votes for their, for the, which records, has its value.
I just, you know, I just feel some concerns about removing a valuable representation. I mean, I, nothing against Park by any means, but I know when I was on this committee, we got more input from the Assessors Office than the Parks Department. So to keep them on there and remove Assessors because their committee right now is thin and they don't have a principal assessor, I just feel like we should be doing something based, for the committee, based on what's best for the committee, not necessarily because of the lack of representation.
Doesn't Park still fulfill the other part of Open Space and Recreation?
Exactly. Well, I will say, there is another section.
It's not called the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
I know. The committee is not, but it's part of the plan, so.
Well, it's part of CPC. CPC considers Parks to be pretty.
Now, I want to draw to your attention another part of the original charge. And that is, if you go to Section 3, letter F, if you happen to have it in front of you, that's when we have to update the Open Space and Recreation Plan. The committee at that point adds, increases to a number of 15, and then brings in a lot of other people. And that's for that specific purpose. When that happens.
If you're having quorum issues now, I'm just not sure then why you would want to increase the membership number.
At that time? Or now?
Or now.
Oh, now, to get the work done? Because we have a lot of work ahead of us.
Oh, okay. So you're not concerned about a quorum, then?
Of course, I'm concerned about a quorum, but I do believe that if we bring in more at-large people, they.
Got more people that.
The assumption will be they can attend.
You've got people, what I think you want to do is bring in more people that are not already committed to other town committees.
That's correct. That's correct.
Other town committees, but have maybe some other time to give. Which is why you want to increase that.
Kind of freestanding people who might be more available.
And have, you know, are volunteering to do this, of course. Appointed by the Select Board, but are volunteering to do this because they personally see the value in the projects that we have before us.
An interest in it, obviously.
I wonder about paring it down and having consultants from Park and Assessors when you need them, but paring it right down to CPC, Conservation, and?
Planning?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I mean, now it's making me kind of look at what would be the most critical positions on an ongoing basis, like this is what they do. And definitely Conservation Commission, and definitely Community Preservation.
And Planning. So you want to see three appointments.
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
Two consultants. Parks would be a consultant, Assessors would be a consultant, and then. Well, we want an odd number.
You're on Planning, so you feel strongly that Planning needs to be there. They are.
Oh, I, I believe it's helpful, yes, a lot. Yeah.
Were you putting Select Board in that? Leaving them in or out?
I was just, I haven't, I didn't, you know, I was just thinking about if she wants to, yeah, it sounds like to me that in spite of quorum issues, you still would like to have more people on this committee.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, Select Board could certainly be a liaison. I mean, it doesn't.
I'm not sure why that would make a difference. I know we shouldn't personalize this, but Joy's been a great contributor.
Makes a big difference to be a voting member, frankly.
Voting and non-voting member.
That's all it is. Yeah. Right.
But that's a big difference.
And it also is a count or a non-count towards a quorum.
Right.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. And you've had a very dedicated person attend, so that's probably not the one we want to eliminate. Okay.
Or, I don't know. I mean, if you added the principal assessor and kept the Select Board, and then you would get down to three community at-large.
I want more community at-large.
I understand that, but we're trying to get the contributing factors in here.
When you want to have a.
And stay at an odd number like nine. Just trying to juggle a little bit.
I didn't know it would be this hard for you.
Yeah. So we got one, two. So if we kept Planning, Community Preservation, Select Board, Conservation Commission as four, four members. Assessors and Parks as consultants, or whatever we want to call them, advisory members, something.
Or associates.
Associates or something. Four. And then that could leave you, within the seven voting members, that would leave you three at-large. Keeping it the same at seven, and you'd have two more at-large members to recruit.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I.
That would work. Does that?
So you said the four appointments would be Planning Board, CPC, Select Board, and CONCOM.
Right.
Two associates, which are Parks and Assessors. And then, so that's one, two, three, four, so then three at-large.
Three at-large. Does that help you?
That would help, of course. Yeah, that would help.
Seven members, and she'll only need you a four-person quorum.
Yep. Okay. Our CPC person, our CONCOM person, and our Planning Board person, and our Select Board person, that's, our Planning Board is me, then those four have been very consistent attendees. Parks, a little less so, and Assessors is obviously going to be a struggle. So, okay, I could do that with three at-large.
Yeah. The other thing would be to go with nine members and keep those two as voting members and hope that this be better representation in the future. So.
Okay, we could do that.
That's what I said, yeah.
That's fine, too, if that would meet. I mean, I totally agree. The Assessors are critical and very knowledgeable and bring in a lot. And they, we just were told quite point-blank that nobody could attend on a regular basis at all. And we could change our meeting night, and it might help the one individual that has a conflict for the night we currently meet, which is Darcy.
Hope that, you know, in the future, they would be more available.
Do you want to take this back to your next Open Space meeting, or do you want a decision tonight?
I think it's okay to do a decision tonight.
I mean, I'm torn between whether to assign two positions just because they're not, I think it should be based on the position itself and their contribution to the committee. I'd be more inclined to keep all the positions that are there and have.
Okay. So we'll do that.
Have nine members and three at-large.
Okay. I think I'm okay with that, understanding that Assessors.
You could always come back if.
Yeah, I may have to fiddle with the meeting night or something like that, but, okay. So three at-large, keep the five.
You have, then your quorum is five.
That's a good point.
Yeah, there's an issue with Section 2 terms, how it's written. Terms shall be three years for each member, and shall be so staggered, blah, blah, blah. You cannot, whether you say appoint or elect, an individual from a board or commission for three years if they don't have three years left on their current term. So you have narrowed your ability. So you may want to take a look at that and say, from those boards and commissions, and again, whether they're appointed from the board or elected from the board, they're one-year terms.
Okay. So we can rewrite that together? That the appointees from boards or commissions would be one-year terms, and then the at-large would be staggered three-years terms?
Yeah. That probably does make a lot more sense, yeah.
Okay.
Can you review it with your committee, though, instead of just changing it just yourself?
Sure.
And also rewrite it so that what Ed said is consistent? I'd feel better about that.
Okay.
It could either be two associate members or have all the original positions there, but you're at least increasing it to three at-large members instead of one.
Okay. That'll be great. I have, there have been some people that have shown some interest, and I've asked them to complete a volunteer form, and then there'll be another point in time. So I'll come back to you.
Okay. So I think we're all generally in favor of what you're proposing here, but we'll get the final version.
Thanks for your time.
All right.
That was short, right?
Appreciate it. Okay. Let's have Paul Forgot, you're here on behalf of the Planning Board, I believe, to talk to us about the Complete Streets Fund. And we have a new handout, I think, that Ed gave us tonight, in that, right under your page there.
Yep. Yeah, I already read it online.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Hi. How are you?
How you doing?
Hopefully, this is the most exciting part of your night.
Why don't you move the mic a little closer there, yeah?
All right. I take it you have this handout that...
Yeah, Joy sent it to us.
Perfect. Several years ago, MassDOT established this funding opportunity known as Complete Streets, where they reached out to many different communities across the state, and offered an opportunity to come up with a three-tiered plan that helps them identify opportunities for sidewalk, intersection, crosswalk improvements, potentially some signalization improvements at locations where they're not owned by the state, but town-owned facilities, to help facilitate and prioritize locations that need to be improved. So, over the last few years, on an annual basis, communities that were awarded funds received about $400,000. I personally have worked with, or professionally have worked with several different communities over the years to help them get those funds, help them come up with a prioritization plan, as well as establish a policy that would help them start off, and then ultimately come up with a prioritization plan, and then ultimately bid plans and come up with improvement opportunities. So, if you notice, this handout you have has three tiers identified in terms of how the program works. One of the requirements is the Tier One component, which basically, the municipality would designate a representative to attend some MassDOT Complete Streets training. That would be somebody like Randall, or whoever else, or somebody from the Planning Board. But more importantly, it would also include the establishment of a town-wide policy on projects that would be either funded by the town, or ultimately accepted as part of, let's say, a subdivision plan that the town would accept, that would incorporate a policy towards complete streets. So, just to give you background on complete streets, it doesn't only include, you know, sidewalks, but also can include bicycle lanes or shoulders wide enough to accommodate bicycle lanes. It could also include, like I mentioned before, RFBs, which are the rapid flashing beacons that you might have seen in some communities, they have them in the downtowns, or at very busy pedestrian crossing locations. So, looking at that, the town would establish a policy where you would say something like, let's say, if there was some agreement by the board, that, okay, going from now on, we're going to look at subdivision, like I'm just going to pick subdivision, for example. New subdivision-accepted streets must have a certain width of roadway, let's say, two lanes of traffic, two five-foot shoulders, which would meet the complete street policy, plus sidewalks on either end. That's an example of a policy, but the way that the policy is also written is there's a lot of flexibility, and there's a lot of examples that other communities have done across the state that provides them a lot of leeway going forward, particularly where right-of-way is limited, because not always will you have enough width in the roadway to accommodate all these needs for all the users, but those are considerations that would be made by the community going forward if they were to adopt a policy. Once a policy is adopted, approved by Select Board, I believe it's the Select Board, I'm not really sure, Ed, maybe that's something you can comment, but in the past, I've worked with communities that had them done with, or the mayor would sign off on them, so it's a different government style, so I'm not sure how that would work in this community. But after that, there would be an opportunity to go to the next tier, which is the Tier Two, it's the prioritization plan. As part of the prioritization plan, the town can get funds to have the ability to get technical support, i.e. a consultant that could help develop the plan, or use funds towards the next level, the next tier. But in terms of the prioritization plan, let's say, there are opportunities in the town to look at several different intersections or sidewalks that are missing between two vital neighborhoods, or vital streets that need to be replaced, that can be identified on this, I want to say, almost like a master list of improvement opportunities that the town would identify as, okay, this is our number-one priority in the town, it's going to require a replacement or construction of, let's say, 1,000 feet of sidewalk, the anticipated construction cost for this is going to be $400,000. We have a second priority, which is, let's say, add a crosswalk on Fulmer Road, that's going to cost blah, 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 we put that in there, we identify that as a, you know, as a cost there for our second priority. And then, that would subsequently also include other opportunities that we would want to have based on discussions with the town, public meeting and so on, or Planning Board, whoever would be in charge of that prioritization list. The third tier would be the award, where we would get a notice from MassDOT, the Complete Streets Group, they would basically say, congratulations, you just have been awarded $400,000 for your Plan Priority One, which includes, let's say, sidewalk on Main Street. At that point, the town would be responsible to get the plans bid procured through the typical Mass General Law procedure. You would get funds from the state as well to help you with the technical assistance, and I believe that's like $38,000, I forget the exact number, $38,000, actually, it's written on that sheet. So, I'm going to stop talking because I think I've exceeded my, my fun explanation of what's part of this, so...
So, if I'm understanding, the first thing that would have to be done would be to create a policy?
A policy.
Not a bylaw, but a policy.
Policy, correct.
Okay, that we would want to engage in a complete streets program.
Correct.
And grant funds would be available to, to be able to get a prioritization study done? What are those funds?
I have to read the details on that. Typically, that's something that could be done at a very high level, it doesn't necessarily need a consultant to do that, because you, it's working with, let's say, Randall or other groups, or, we know what sidewalk costs per square yard, right? We know what typically is included in that cost, you don't need to hire somebody to do that, but that's something that could be easily done, to establish what that cost is, maybe that's a Randall task, maybe that's a Planning Board task, but what I've seen other communities do is use that towards the procurement of the bid documents. So, for example, in Montague, I think they used that, part of that $38,000 to establish bid plans, they didn't do a survey or anything of that nature, they just took some aerial plans off of Google, basically drew some lines, did some field measurements, just to confirm what's available in certain areas, you didn't have to spend money, you know, up to 10% of your design costs, actually, not 10%, actually, 10% of your design costs in engineering, you could do it at a very high-level bid process, where you would identify how much square yard you're looking at for certain material, can be installed by contractor, and can be easily done.
And are funds available for this program, like annually, is it like an annual?
Yes, it's an annual, yeah, it's an annual program, yeah.
And is there a reason Southampton hasn't bid into this before? Why haven't we taken advantage of this before?
I don't know the answer, really, I heard some rumors, but I don't know what the real answer is.
I may be able to shed some light on that.
Okay, go ahead.
And Randall was not, Randall Kemp was not able to be here tonight, so he actually brought this to my office, and this goes back a few years, but he and one of my predecessors, Heather, had gone through all of this, and I put the package together that Randall put here, and it tells a little bit different story than Paul is telling tonight, it actually does require a ordinance bylaw, and I know the highlights of, that are on my original copy, didn't come out when I copied it, but one of the pieces of that bylaw requirement, and I'm just pulling it out, says, where is a complete streets ordinance bylaw for city-town will integrate complete streets planning into all types of projects, including new construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, repair, and maintenance, where such are practical during the construction, reconstruction, and other changes of transportation facilities on streets and redevelopment projects. Then you get into Section 3 definitions, and the third paragraph of that says, complete streets infrastructure means physical street features that contribute to a safe, convenient, or comfortable travel experience for users, including but not limited to features such as sidewalks, shared-use paths, bicycle lanes, automobile lanes, paved shoulders, street trees, and landscaping, planting strips, curbs, accessible curb ramps, bulb outs, haven't heard that one before, crosswalks, refuge items, pedestrian and traffic signals, including countdown and accessible signals, signage, street furniture, bicycle parking facilities, public transportation stops and facilities, transit priority signalization, traffic calming devices such as rotary circles, traffic bumps, and surface treatments such as paving blocks, textured asphalt and concrete, narrow vehicle lanes, raised medians, and dedicated transit lanes. Street means any right-of-way, public or private, including arterials, connectors, alleys, ways, lanes, and roadways, by any other designation, as well as bridges, tunnels, and any other portions of the transportation network. Street project means the construction, reconstruction, retrofit, maintenance, alteration, or repair of any street, and it goes on, but it's not highlighted. So, what Randall and Heather had deciphered this app from talking to other people would mean that if Southampton were to take this on and do this, that if we wanted to go overlay a particular street, well, then guess what, all the requirements of a complete street would actually have to be taken up, and would actually increase our costs to do those reconstruction items, so you're basically trading off short-term money for some grants for a larger, long-term, higher cost of maintenance of your roads, and that's why Southampton has never gone this way.
Not sure I totally understand all that.
Has Randall been to your meetings when you were discussing this?
Versus a bylaw? Hang on a second, what, Francine, go ahead.
I was just asking if Randall has been participated in any...
No, not at all, he has not been. To what Ed mentioned, obviously, he's reading the interpretation requirements, however, what I've seen other communities do is they've written loose, and I underscored the word loose, ordinances that basically identify limitations that the town has, for example, funding, right? You have Chapter 90, the town gets, what, $350,000 a year?
Right on target.
Okay? Obviously, you can't install 8,000 feet of sidewalk every time you do a mill, an overlay of roadway in the town, right? That's just cost prohibitive. You have to look at establishing limitations to what you have. I mean, obviously, we have, what, 362 communities in the state? Not all of them have painted themselves into that corner of saying, we need to put new sidewalks in every time where we surface a roadway, that's not the case, some communities have that concern, and I understand it, and another off-topic, not off-topic, but another comment I heard from other communities is, well, I don't want DOT to dictate what we do in the town, I get it, you know? You know, I'm a parent, I moved to town in 2013? Yeah, 12, 2013. I walk around the streets, I have kids, I see people walking down the side of the road, there's no sidewalks, I mean, I could paint a sad story, but I'm not going to, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, you know, we have a lot of residents that utilize our streets and facilities, as a Planning Board member, I think it would be a grand idea to have more sidewalks in town. I think there's a balancing act that we have to look at, and frankly, you know, I look at it just as a tangent, we've established a stormwater ordinance in town, which is, has a lot of teeth in it, but it also has a lot of flexibility for the town, right? In terms of setting all these best management practices that we need to enable, but there's a lot of language in there that allows us to have some flexibility, which I believe is what we can do. I'm not a lawyer, like someone said earlier tonight, they're not a lawyer in terms of interpretations, but I think if we could, at the very least, investigate what other communities did, because East Hampton has received funds, Northampton has received funds, the town of Montague, who I've worked with in the past, has received funds, the city of Fitchburg, who I've worked with, have received funds.
But the stormwater is a mandate, right?
Right.
So, is this just a difference interpretation of whether we need a policy versus an ordinance?
Well, the policy is, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, the policy is referenced in the ordinance, so basically, it's a couple-page letter that the town established, and I could bring you some examples to show you what other communities have used, but the point is, the ones that I've seen have a lot of flexibility in what can be done.
Well, if you have to do a bylaw, and towns do bylaws, cities do ordinances, that's the difference.
So, that's where your ordinance reference?
Difference between a policy and a bylaw is, policy can be made by the Select Board, it can be changed by the Select Board. Bylaw is done by town meeting, and it has to be changed by town meeting, and yes, it is, has a lot more stricter interpretation and requirements to it, so...
Yeah, yeah. Well, and it seems like, I'm not quite sure that I understand what the downside is that you were presenting it, I'm not...
In layman's terms, I took it to mean if we want to fix a section of a road on our own, and we adopt this, it was implied that...
The entire thing is...
We would, at that time, it's almost like if you repair more than 25% of a building, you know?
Add the sidewalks and anything else that's required from this.
So, perhaps, perhaps the approach is, because I think this would be a bylaw, under our case, is to refer to the bylaw committee, refer in the, you know, the highway superintendent, find other communities that have looser language, so that the bylaw committee could look at those, and get feedback from the highway superintendent on his worst-case scenario, what that means, because, I mean, this is a guide that was put out by the policy administration, wherever I just read that, as a suggestion and a template. My guess is there are other communities that have passed things that are less restrictive, and take it from there.
And that's why I asked if Randall had participated, so that you could find some common ground, that he would have some of the flexibility, based on what John's describing as a situation that would be untenable for us, and still be able to move forward and make some advances along this complete streets. And I just want to correct one thing, this would be a bylaw that would be done by the Planning Board.
Well, don't all bylaws have to eventually go through the bylaw committee?
Well, not the way we're, not the way we're set up right now.
Zoning?
The zoning, zoning board, yeah, but that's okay. I'm just, I'm just saying, this is certainly more technical than like anyone on our committee is prepared to deal with.
Would it be a zoning bylaw, or a general bylaw? It's a general bylaw?
Zoning bylaw.
No, it's a general bylaw, that's it, so we'd have to have some technical expertise.
So, that bylaw committee's got, you know, got to do their studying.
I was looking for this.
Or pull in the experts that can guide them.
Well, I think I...
We need some expertise, but yes.
No, I think the idea would be to, just to get forward, so maybe another meeting to have Randall be there and talk about it in more detail, but find some examples of bylaws from other similar-sized communities, stay away from the city ordinances that maybe are bigger than us, but if you know of similar communities like Montague and others, maybe that would be a good, good start to just understand what's there, but I guess I'm, I'm understanding more about, you know, if we choose this, then you've got to do the entire street, but again, that would seem like as you did your prioritization study, and said, well, this is a, you know, this is a priority over here, because and because, you know, you're looking at all those factors to determine whether that's a high priority or not, based on whether you've got to really, you know, refab the entire neighborhood, kind of thing, so...
We've stepped into it a little bit with, not the bridge, but the E-street design. Phase one goes to Whispering Meadow. The phase after that, we very well may want to look at finding other funding sources, so we do not have to meet the requirements of having either the shared path or the sidewalks on both sides, going the rest of the way out of county, just because of the topography issues, and...
Does make a lot of sense.
Yeah, exactly, so...
Yeah, well, and I think, too, this sounds like, unlike many of the other kind of road-type Chapter 90 projects, this would not be something that would hit the tip list, right?
Absolutely not, it's a town...
Totally separate, and totally theoretically more, what?
The town's in the driving, yeah.
More manageable, I don't know.
They're all Chapter 90 eligible, but they would not be tip-list eligible, correct?
But we're not waiting for 10 years for something to happen, right? I mean, you could make something happen...
You can make this happen, you can start in the fall and get this constructed in the spring.
Right, so, okay, so I think, I don't know, thoughts? My own thought would be that, you know, to have another meeting, and at your next meeting, sometime have Randall, you know, fill in the history of what he knows about what happened way back when, and then get some other information from other towns, and feel free to shoot it to Francine for the bylaws committee to take a look at.
Maybe take the existing language that they had here for us tonight and modify it based on the feedback, and then submit that to the bylaw.
Yeah, and whether this is, you know, I mean, this is a template, whether it's got to be written totally... got to be written totally in stone like this or not, but it's...
I've seen that cut down tremendously, in a great deal, so.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, I don't know, I would favor moving forward for a couple of more steps, just to get more information, so we're all better informed, and then, you know, come back to us at another moment when you've got more to, you know, be a little concrete on. But at least we ought to explore it and find out all the pros and cons. I mean, it would be my favoring thought, that, you know, if it's something where all the negatives are going to outweigh it, then, well, we'd have a big concern about that, obviously. But if this is a program that several other communities are adopting, then how are they dealing with it? What are the pitfalls when they actually are implementing it? Would be a question, I guess, too. I don't know. Anybody else? Sorry, didn't mean to take over the microphone. Anybody?
Yeah, just to build off that, what Ed was saying, and once again, I'm going to bring Montague in the topic of discussion. They're using Chapter 90 dollars to resurface roadways that, and the reason why I know this, I'm talking about it today, because it's adjacent to one of my projects in town, where they're resurfacing the roadway using Chapter 90 dollars. There's poor sidewalks or lack of sidewalks, lack of ADA accommodations that are within those limits. So that, to me, tells me that there's a lot of flexibility in what the town can establish in the bylaw as a policy.
Okay. Okay. Well, that would be good to find out and put the bylaw committee to work, and it would obviously have to be something drafted that would end up at a town meeting at some point or special town meeting, one or the other.
There, you know, and just to build off what's going on E Street, I have no idea what's going on E Street. But the point I'm trying to make is, there are conditions that are outside of our control. You have topography, you have culverts, you have environmentally sensitive areas. I mean, there's context sensitivity that we need to, you know, review as part of whatever project we do. So it would be, you know, to have a very rigid town bylaw that says, "Thou shall do this" is impossible. I mean, it's the real world, and costs and property impacts and environmental issues. So you're not going to resurface a roadway because, well, hang on, I'm not going there.
Yeah. Okay. But I think, I think I would just suggest that, you know, we keep moving forward and just gather a bit more information and come back and fill us in a little bit more once you have gotten some thoughts from other towns in terms of how they've actually implemented this and how flexible it really is.
Yeah, and Randall's input.
And Randall's input as well, for sure.
Absolutely, yeah, it's important.
And I just want to add, the bylaw committee would appreciate technical assistance in this one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay? Because I would, you know, this is something that I think is a great idea. I mean, we need to, just seeing the limited sidewalks that we have and how they're used and how many more people would be getting better exercise and not using their cars and all this other stuff. I would love to see us move this forward, or some parts of this forward.
And the one thing I just do want to underscore, it can't be on state-owned roads. It's on town facilities. Route 10's out of the picture.
Route 10's out of the bailiwick, huh? Okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, Paul, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Something to consider. All righty. Let's go back up to the top of the list under new business.
I'll make a motion to approve an employee's short-term disability extension.
Okay.
I second.
All right. All those in favor?
Could I just ask you a question first?
Oh, I'm sorry?
So in terms of our current short-term disability policy, is there any concern in terms of the extension?
No, not at my eyes.
Okay, thank you.
Still within the parameters.
Okay. Aye, if I didn't hear you.
Okay, yeah, I think we had all in favor.
Okay.
I think we all did that. Okay, so that we agree with. Thank you. Approved. All right. Next, Chapter 61 land right of first refusal on former road.
And we have received official documentation from the assessors, the planning board, and the conservation commission, that all three have voted to waive the right of first refusal on this one lot.
Okay, yeah. I recall this was a fairly small, one-acre lot, or thereabout, something like that.
1.64 or something. I'll make a motion to waive our right of first refusal on, let me get the address here.
I know it's former, but I forgot the designation.
Lot four.
One crooked ledge.
Crooked ledge, former road. Yeah. Lot four of crooked ledge and former road. Okay? To waive our right of first refusal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Next.
Through the chair, does the board have any interest in at least moving the two police PCFs up out of order?
Where are they? Okay. Oh, we didn't, okay, got you. Under the signatures? Yeah. Okay.
So, did we have copies of those in the packet? I didn't see them.
Yes, we do. For the police ones?
Should be.
In the hand ones, not the electronic ones, right?
I have the printed one, for sure. I've seen it in my package.
I didn't see any PCFs in the electronic version, but they're in here?
They're in the, they're in the printed version.
If I missed them, but I didn't see any.
The last two pages in the printed version.
The last pages.
Very end.
Before the minutes?
No.
I see warrants.
Hold on.
I don't see them.
Yes, they're before, they're before the minutes.
Right before the minutes?
Yeah, it's right, I've got them right here. Yep, hold on. So, comes after all the other PCFs. So they were the last two PCFs in the package after...
The very end, yep.
Do you find all the PCFs in one group?
I see a personal change form. Yeah, I see that one.
So you got the one right there. Those are the two.
No, that wasn't in the packet, not when I had, anyway, I don't believe.
Okay.
So if I just have a minute, something.
Right. So we have two, two actions here on...
So I'll make a motion to approve PCF related to Lauren Solomon, police dispatcher, part-time, non-benefited, effective upon approval of this board, and PCF Ryan Holmes, police officer, leave of absence, modified in the PPB meeting with an effective date of 8/21/22. And then that was for unpaid leave of absence.
So the leave of absence is 8/21, not 8/25?
Correct.
Until 9/25, 2020?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion. Let's have a second, then we can have some discussion.
I'll second.
All right. Ian, would you like to, since you're here, would you like to speak to that?
Unless the board has any questions, that's all.
Yeah, no, just maybe, so this is a new dispatcher you're hiring?
Oh, the dispatcher, yes. That's a new dispatcher for open position, I think, since January, so.
And this is like a per diem position, right?
Yes, it is. It's per diem.
Yeah. Okay. Right. Okay. Anybody have any questions, a minute?
Nope.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, so all those in favor of both PCFs for the police department? Do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Who seconded that?
Francine did.
I did.
Francine did, yes.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. Motion's approved. Thank you. Thanks, Ian, appreciate it.
Have a good night, Ian.
Good night.
Okay. All right. Let's go back to animal control. Now, Ed, would you like to, we've got a couple of things going on. So we have our animal control agreement with Westfield, with the city of Westfield, we have the...
For what I will call a permanent one. We had gone through all the amendments, we were able to do for the last one, so it's a negotiation of a new permanent one. We're looking for any comments from the select board. I also sent out that to both the police chief and the town clerk for some comments on it. Did get back from the police chief that there wasn't any mention of taking care of non-domesticated animals in it, so I'm going to have to go back and compare the one that just expired to this one and see if they were referred to in that. And then, the town clerk referred to, and I don't believe it belongs in the agreement, I think it belongs in the bylaw, which is on hold, that she was talking about being able to require individuals that animals had, shall we say, medical matters or whatever, taken care of before they picked them up, for the town being able to recoup the funds for those. But I'm going to have, I'm going to have to check with town council on that. I believe that it really would not be enforceable in the agreement itself, but that would have to be part of a bylaw, for us to be able to enforce that.
They have to pay all the fees before picking them up, though, directly to the Westfield Animal Control, right?
Well, either that or they'd have to pay them here and take the receipt to the animal control facility.
Yeah. Right, but the, okay.
I think the only issue that comes up is if someone does not come to retrieve the animal, and the costs consumed, and then those costs come where? To the town?
Those would come to the town, correct.
Yeah, we're like the default.
Right.
You know, we'll say that, how many years ago, a few years ago, Ed and I looked into this whole thing, because this contract is being renewed, and there were some concerns that were addressed by various people. One of them had to do with the non-domestic animals and why are dog fees going towards whatever, and there was some concern about that. There was also, there were also some other concerns that were raised. So we looked into, I mean, I don't think there's a lot of other places. I looked into the state back then, and I don't know that they're a certified wildlife rehabilitator or whatever, so that was a little bit of a concern. And I think in the end, what I did was, had a conversation with the police chief, who's ultimately going to be the person who's going to have to be dealing with this. When people see an injured animal, or if there's a dog running loose, it's the police that get called. And so at the time, I'm not sure if it was Chief Goyette or Illingsworth, I asked them and they basically said, "We're very happy with the service. We don't know what we'd do," you know, whatever. So that's, I mean...
That was Chief Illingsworth.
It was Chief Illingsworth. So I think there are some concerns, but it's sort of a trade-off, I think.
I mean, one of the things in here it said was that animal control services do not deal with, obviously, nuisance calls and...
Right.
And barking and deceased animals in a public right-of-way.
Right. I think the highway department does that, and the police do deal with the barking, right? Yeah.
So they don't do that? So I don't know if there's any other mention about non-domesticated...
I'm going to have to go back to the contract that just expired and see if there was any specific mention in that one, too.
And what Chief Illingsworth said about that is, you know, "We're a rural community, you know, we want wild animals to be, you know, cared for and whatever, that they call the police," and what are you supposed to do, say, "I'm sorry, we can't do anything about it," kind of a thing, call, I mean, mass audubon or whatever.
Right. I mean, so if maybe it were not part of the purview with Westfield Animal Control, maybe we could have at least, you know, separate notification, you know, contact numbers for the wildlife rehabilitators or so forth in the area. I mean, I know there's one in Comington, and there's two or three others around, that we could have, you know, more publicity in terms of what to do if you see an injured raccoon or whatever.
Right, right. I think the difficulty with that might be that they're so individual, so I know that when we had had a pet rabbit that was injured, you call Rabbit Rescue. If it's something else, you call somebody else.
They're all specialized.
And so I don't know that, they're all very specialized based on the type of animal, whereas I think our contract up till now has been sort of a one-shot for stray dogs, injured animals, you know, that sort of thing.
So right now, Westfield is taking those kinds of calls?
Yeah.
They are taking?
It's just that the contract doesn't say that.
Right. So that might need to be spelled out a little bit.
Yeah.
And I think, is this intended to be possibly, well, the draft I had seen, not the one that went to the KP Law one, is a five-year contract, though, right? So we...
Yes. Can we do that, Ed?
Can we do that? This has to go to town meeting in order to do this, if it's a five-year contract?
Well, no. This is an inter-municipal agreement, so it does not have to go to town meeting.
Doesn't have to. Okay, all right. And so then, looking at the temporary one that you're proposing here, this came through some of the changes that KP Law is suggesting here?
Right. I got their review back from Tim Zesson at KP Law today, and, you know, if the select board happened to be comfortable with the suggested edits that he's made and said, you know, "We would be willing to sign this if Westfield's agreeable to him," I'll just send it, I'll send it back either way, but I'll send it back to Westfield and say, "Here's the notes from our town council, select board is agreeable to sign this if you are agreeable to it."
Motion to approve temporary animal contract as modified by KP Law while the town administrator continues to research and finalize the permanent five-year inter-municipal agreement with the questions that he has already raised tonight, and to authorize, I guess, all of us to sign off on it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion here?
One other concern I had, that I don't know if it was previously addressed with the current contract, we have had difficulties with animals that either are nuisance animals that were barking, because we've had hearings here, we also have had animals that we find out end up going to the shelter and are not registered with the town. So this may not be part of this, but I just wanted to mention, is there a way to make sure that when an animal's picked up from, because basically, we don't know about it, I don't even know if the town clerk knows about it, because basically, the police pick up an animal, they call, someone comes to get them, and then they can't be released until, they contact the town clerk, I guess, to get any more information on the animal, and then they pay the charges for the medical care or immunizations, and we never know that that happens right until we get a bill. So is there a way that they can then be followed up with to say, "Oh, by the way, your animal's not registered in the town?"
Town clerk should be able to send them a periodic, whether it's a once-a-month update or whatever, on the animals that are licensed in Southampton. So I would say yes.
Okay.
So I can check on that and see if there's language in there, too.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table here to approve the temporary contract, and did you have a timeframe on this, Ed, or not totally yet, in terms of what you...
I think it will go through October or something.
Oh, I'm sorry, October 1st, I just saw it. Sorry. Thank you. October 1st. Okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Get that under control, literally.
No pun intended.
No pun intended. All right, we got that one. Okay. Next, Public Safety Building Committee amended charge, and I think this is maybe just back for our signature, or is there more discussion to be had?
There was one...
I added something.
One piece added to it, which is the last bullet.
The apply-for and secure funding for the feasibility study? That was just an added bullet? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Is this in our packet here, too, the paper copy?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I usually make notes on there, but some of these things weren't in there.
So that's the only change? We've basically approved this, and we're just adding that one. We've basically approved this and we're just adding that one bullet at this point in time?
So here's my question, that I, when I sent back edits, I did a little bit differently on purpose. I put bullet points under the first one that basically said, the committee, where are we? "Work with the town administrator to draft the SOW and develop a RFQ for a feasibility study for a planning and design consultant to be reviewed by the Select Board." So then it has other duties of the committee, which also include identi-, nope, not that "Determine recommended size, layout, and locations of the public safety building. Provide information as required to the selected consulting firm regarding the site location and interior layout." So I just wanted to make sure that the Select was involved in some of these decisions, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And so, you know, when I had given feedback, other than adding the part about secure funding for the feasibility study, I just wanted to make sure that there was a sequence that made sense to the Select Board in terms of oversight.
Yeah, because you've got your report back to the Select Board, though. I mean, once, like, I would assume, once we all agree, like, say with the senior center one that's getting closer, they've got the RFQ that they're gonna be in the final stages of interviewing and hopefully approving the ideal vendor. Once that vendor is chosen, the contractor is chosen, then it's gonna be that committee that's gonna be talking back and forth-
Right.
-and doing that with them in terms of the size and all that kind of, you know, the amenities that they would like in the senior center, is what I'm understanding.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so I guess I took that to be the same thing here, because we're gonna be looking at, on the, what am I gonna call it? On the RFQ itself, we're gonna be taking a look at what has to be included, as well as other elements that they would like to include if it's possible, but the basic requirements of what a public safety complex design should have, as well as its size. So that's gonna be, we're gonna get a first pass at that in the RFQ, to have that very clearly laid out in the RFQ. And then, once the proposals come back in, even if the committee is making a recommendation as to the vendor that they wanna choose, right, it's still gonna come back to us to sign off on, right?
I just wanna know if it's in the intention of the Select Board that we're delegating to both of these committees decisions around the size of the center, what should be in the center, the location of the centers or complex. Is that your intention, that you're delegating to these committees those three decisions? Because, not for the senior center, because we haven't been here before, but for the public safety complex, those were three pressure points in the past that caused problems. The size, what was in it, and location were all parts that were contentious.
What I don't understand is why those three elements aren't part of the feasibility study.
Well, they are.
Yeah.
They are.
It says completely, I hear you up there, but I see two locations.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, not totally in their hands, no. I mean, they're gonna be working with a design consultant, once the RFQ is in place, right, and going through all that they have to go through for the design, that design, isn't that covered in the last bullet, that complete the feasibility study? Well, no.
I think location should be in the last bullet.
Okay, here's the thing, the senior center has money.
Right.
They can buy, they can pay for the feasibility study, they can purchase land.
Right.
So in terms of what they want, and what they add, and where it is, and all of that, are we delegating to these committees decision-making around size, what's included in the center, and where it is? And that's the only part I wanna be very clear about, because in the past, it was problematic. And I want to make sure that this board tells me what you're thinking.
Okay.
I guess I just, I have a clarification question, and I get the funding source on where they have the money, but my interpretation is, they don't have the authority to actually go out and acquire this stuff on their own, without coming back to us.
That's what I wanna make sure is clear in this charge.
I'm talking about on the COA.
Both of them.
Both of them, okay, yeah.
But what this is doing is allowing them to develop the RFQ for the feasibility study.
Mm-hmm.
So once the feasibility study is done-
Then they come back.
It's definitely gotta come back to us.
Right, because we have to free up the cash.
And that, that's clear on that.
Not only do you have to free up the cash, or request the cash, or the appropriation, or the debt, you also have to approve, putting it on a town meeting for a vote. You also have to-
But that's the money part.
Have to approve, because these are probably both debt exclusions, you'd also have to approve and authorize the language to go on the ballot for them.
Right, but that, we're talking about money here. What I'm talking about, and what I want clarification from this board, is are they delegated to make the decisions around where it's gonna be located, what size it is, and what's included in the facility?
I guess I would say I'm okay with that, but I see it as they're finalizing their recommendation to us to act upon.
That's what I wanna make sure.
It's a recommendation.
It's not a final decision at their level.
That's what I wanna make sure is clear in this charge.
Yeah, because to me, if ultimately it's gonna be up to us, then we should just be doing all the work, right? But we put a panel of experts together in both cases to come up with their recommendation, and then we're basically, it's gonna pass, for lack of better terms, a sniff test when it gets to us.
I wasn't sure if what was drafted there is very clear about that point.
Gotcha, okay. So is the last part, the "Complete the feasibility study and determine potential design and construction costs and report back to the Select Board," is that-
How about "Complete the final recommended feasibility study and determine potential," you know?
Or make recommendations to the Select Board, or something?
Yeah, agree on the final recommendation to present to the Select Board.
So not just report back, but report back-
Here's our recommendation.
Your recommendations.
Here's why we think it should be this size, here's what we think should be in-
Where the committee's recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I wanna make sure is 100% clear.
Report back to the Select Board with the committee's recommendations, how's that?
Yeah.
Because ultimately, if they can't convince three of us to support it, it's not going anywhere.
Right, so, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, that helps a lot.
Yeah, just a little tweak there. Thank you on that.
So, based on that, can I make a motion to amend it, or to approve it as amended, by adding the word "recommendation," where so noted?
Yeah, as we just talked about it, yeah. Okay, could we have a second? Francine, one second? Francine?
I'm thinking.
She's thinking. She's not ready, okay.
I don't know where my book is here.
Sure, okay. Okay, don't wanna rush you, no, no, take your time.
Okay, so what you're saying is that determine recommended size, layout, and locations of the public safety building, okay, recommend, so that's what they're recommending?
Well, and then report back to the Select Board.
The very last, the very last one.
Instead of "complete," "recommend," you know?
Yeah, and "report back to the Select Board with the committee's recommendations."
Okay.
Okay. Because I was trying to wordsmith it in my head here as we're sitting here, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll change, I'll second it.
All right. Okay, if no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good, thank you. Okay, now, and we will get that around to get signed, we'll catch that up.
Actually, I do start signing some of the other stuff tonight, I will actually go and-
Yeah, now while we-
Add that to it and bring it back for signing.
Sure, whenever we get a break on this, we may need a stretch break in a certain moment, I know I will. Okay, let's see if we can jump over to the, we have the, let's see, hold on, the FY22 Revenue and Expenditure Report, which gets us through June 30th, as Ed told us.
Right. So I have questions on this, but I, you know, I don't know if it's necessarily fair to put the town administrator on the spot to answer all these questions.
You always do, so what the heck?
Yeah, let's do it.
The worst answer I'm gonna come out with is, I'll find out for you.
I have questions.
On page four, "If we appropriated and budgeted and planned on $3,300 to be spent on an OPEB actuary study, how come we only spent $1,260? And should that remaining $2,000 be encumbered?" It's been my experience that those are generally fixed cost.
Yeah, we appropriated $3,300.
My memory is that's part of the reduction from the new company, but I'll find out for make sure.
All right. On page seven, first line, am I interpreting that correctly, that these unaudited reports indicate that our ambulance receipts are sitting at $221,000?
That would be correct.
Okay, thank you. That was important. And, all right, that's a separate note. On page nine, just for my own clarification, dog control, there's a surplus of $15,730?
Yes.
So is that tied to the contract we just renewed? Is that part of the dog licensing software that possibly may be familiar? I just don't know why there's so much extra in that line item.
Good question.
Because our expenses haven't-
So have we paid the software for the dog licensing?
What did it go for? Yeah.
Because my guess is-
As far as I know, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm only saying, because here now, I'm thinking, okay, there's an extra $15,000 in that line item, did we build in an extra $15,000 in this year's budget line item?
Right.
And do we have a cascade effect, or is it a timing issue?
It's a revolving fund, so it's not a-
All right, good point.
Line item, but I know, I can remember last year Lucy was questioning it because it had gone over $10,000. And she thought that-
So those are receipts taken?
That actually had to be, anything over 10 had to go back into the general fund, but Vicki said at one of the meetings that, well, if the revolving account was set up that way, so now I have to do some-
Checking on that.
History investigating to see if, how that account was originally set up.
But the dog control is basically where our dog license money goes?
That makes sense if it's a revolver, so receipts coming in the office. Then on page 11, this might be timing, but potroy metal debt is deficit spent by $55,000?
I, no, it's not. I think there's still a, it's either a carryover from '21, or it's because of the fact that it really should be over in the debt.
That the purchase of the land?
Huh?
That the purchase of the land?
That's what-
Yeah, that's the portion we pay every year from the CPC funds.
Okay.
To acquire that.
That needs to get fixed, right?
There's just a, there's a counter entry that just hasn't been made.
Yeah, there's an issue in reporting there somewhere, but I will find out exactly where that exists. I believe it has something to do with that, the way it's reported and there, rather than the debt, so.
And then, on page 12, we budgeted $18,000 for police portable radios. Memory serves me, I think we did that as a part of a town meeting or a special vote.
Yes.
And we ordered them?
We've got, acquired most of them through CARES.
CARES, yeah.
Okay. But my memory, and let me check with the chief, because I wanted to bring this back to the Select Board, just to be above board, I thought they still need, he still needed five to complete everything. And if that was the case, I was gonna recommend that we allow him to acquire those five through these funds, because I believe this was budgeted for 10.
Right, and because this is capital, this will carry forward.
Right.
This won't fall to free cash.
No.
Right.
It'll go back to capital, to be respent.
But meaning as, because it wasn't spent as of June 30th, it doesn't fall out like the general fund?
Still be spent.
It sits there until it's deemed not needed for that purpose?
It sits there until the department head says this project is complete, and, you know, and, you know, if there's unexpended funds left, please, you know, please close them out back to, in this case, capital stabilization.
All right. And then, on page 14 under the wire department, and this might be a question you don't have, but I see we didn't spend $140,000 on what looks to be a purchase from 2021, fiscal year 21, wire department.
Page 21?
Page 14.
It's Article 21, it's not fiscal 21, is it?
It's Article 21, this truck is on order and is being built.
Okay.
So that's the reason?
All right.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So it's encumbered? You're waiting for the vehicle to be-
Right, because it's uncovered in the price count. Yeah, the rest of my account, the questions are on revenue, so I'll just, I'll stop there.
So, did we not spend any reserve fund money, 2,000?
What page was it?
I think, hang on, did I get the first one?
No, we didn't have.
So we budgeted 2,000, we didn't spend a single bit of reserve fund, and we increased our reserve fund to 5,000 now, right?
A reserve fund should be somewhere around 30,000 to 40,000.
Right, I'm just saying, no, we didn't spend even 2,000, and we're now up to 5,000, right?
So we're getting there.
Okay.
It's like having $5 and you all it for that rainy day fund. It's like, usually the rainy day fund might need 50 bucks or 100 bucks, so, type of thing.
Yeah, I know, but my point is that we did not spend a dime of it, and we increased the budget line to 5,000.
Right.
The next question I had about local school transportation, we're only at 69, is that, is that 95,000 not spent? Is that accurate, or is there something else there? That's on page-
I would have to have Bradley check with the school department on that.
Local schools?
Local school transportation might be us, so.
Okay, yeah, that's 95,000. It's only 69% spent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, not sure about that. A Sharps program also, I don't know, it's not that much left in there, but that's just important, I think, to keep in mind, only three-quarters of it was spent. I don't know if it's a change in interest or whatever, but that might be something to ask the Board of Health about.
What's that?
The Board of Health, Sharps program.
That was just due to COVID and people not-
Not picking up-
-able, well, either pick up or drop off.
This is not a major deal, because the expense line is not much for this, but park commission expenses are 56.91 expended. They just had a big, you know, like fundraising drive for pickleball courts, and they just submitted an ARPA application for repair of the tennis courts. So I don't know if that just ends up going back into free cash, or if that's encumbered, but.
Well, the park expenses, that's the 2,000, or what?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, I mean, we've had a lot of people donate towards the pickleball, and it just seems like to not, to just be over 50,000.
Last I knew, they were still trying to figure out how to pay for their fiscal year '22 trash removal, so they may not have identified that.
This may be more utility stuff, isn't it? Like, even their water and electric bills, or no?
Usually they'll pay the water and the electric from their, like, pavilion revolving account, and stuff like that.
The only other question I had about expenses on page six, chapter 90, FY22, balance is 313,000. Why does it say 0% expended? Is that a mistake?
No.
No.
Because nothing's been expended on it.
Nothing's been spent yet.
Oh, okay, right.
It's a bunch of revisions, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Francine, did you have anything?
And while you're on that page, I'll just let you know that that 4505 that's negative just has to be transferred into the chapter 90 fiscal year 19, but because there's no exact invoice for 450556, Bradley's been trying to figure out the best way to move that.
Hmm. Okay.
So, are we ready for revenue questions?
One more, I had one more, I'm just trying to find it, I'm sorry. Uh, gosh. Yeah, I had it a minute ago, I just turned the page. Turn it. There's something on the, oh darn it, where we had the cemetery water line, oh, on page 12, cemetery water line replacement, that 9,700, wasn't that the first town meeting approval we had, and then we approved it again, did we not? Does that fall in, wasn't that in '22 that we approved in addition?
It's two different approvals, correct.
Okay, but is it, I'm only seeing it once on here, is it under, is it under capital? Is that where it should be?
It's under capital.
Should be under capital.
It is.
There's one for 9,700, which was the original amount that was insufficient. So I'm wondering where the second amount is, if it fell in here correctly, somewhere.
Did it come from another source other than capital? Did it come from another source other than capital?
Did it come from?
Like community preservation or something?
Yeah, I'll have to find out from Bradley.
Definitely didn't come from community preservation, I think it came from capital. But we, we bumped it up like another, wasn't it another 12,000 or something?
That was about, it was either 12 or 13, so I don't know why that's.
I think that's missing, it seems to be for me, but I didn't see it anywhere else quickly anyway, let's put it that way. It could be there, but I don't know. And then just right at the very top of that, I guess that's true, the Greenway right-of-way article, the balance is 270, we didn't spend it because we, we gave it back essentially, right?
What's that?
The Greenway right-of-way article at the top of that same page, the first article, the first one on page 12, the 270,000, we changed it because that was able to be covered under CPC. So it's showing.
Yes.
A balance of 270, but it, that money is actually, got rearranged for CPC money.
Right, we rescinded that vote.
Right, and.
On the money portion of it.
Correct, and so I didn't. Oh, maybe I did see it, okay, it's 269 over there, okay, $180 got spent, I got it. I didn't see it on the CPC, I just saw it, thank you.
What's that one?
It, the 270 correlates now to CPC, I didn't see it.
Oh, okay.
It's a, $180 of it got spent, so it's 269819, it's the second to the last one on CPC, so that did make the transfer, okay. All right, expense questions, John, you had?
Expense on page one.
Expense to revenue.
I'm sorry, revenue. On page one, 8825, 3:17 PM. If I'm to believe this report, it looks like everybody but two of our upstanding citizens sold all their boats. Nobody paid an excise tax on a boat?
Yeah, I think what the Board of Assessors decided was that the limited amount of boats, that the charges of actually recouping anything would be more than what they would get in excise. I do believe that's what they said.
I don't think they send excise tax bills out for under X amount of dollars. But I will, I will find out.
But we budgeted for them to do so to the $2,2500.
Oh, yes.
So, I mean, I'm assuming we carried that number forward and used it in this year's budget. So if going forward, they're not going to do that, we should zero out that line item, for example. And then under department revenue, other departmental, we budgeted to collect 68,500 and we collected zero?
Yep. What page is that?
Department, page one, department revenue.
Department revenue, what was other departmental revenue supposed to relate to?
I'm thinking possibly it's the marijuana cannabis that got its own line item at 48, okay. So, you know, again, we, we budgeted for 68, we didn't collect a penny. Did we repeat that process in this current budget that we should be aware of?
My guess, it was just reported in the wrong area.
Yeah, those two need a little clarification.
So I think probably the course on that is, I don't know who comes up with that number, but there's got to be some historical data behind it to see if maybe something fell in a different category.
The hard part is it's a, especially at budgeting time, is it's a combination of categories.
Correct, yeah. And then, I don't, well, and then I get to the water department, which is at the back on page 11, under the water department. Just given what's going on, water usage charges is down by 13,000, hookup fees and charges was under budget by 47. So those two line items, they missed budget by $61,000. Well, no, meter fees is 52,000, normally they don't collect anything, so there might be a classification there. Water liens, I understand, I mean, that should be a zero budget, but.
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe the meter fees is in the wrong.
Yeah. Correct.
My memory is actually trying to budget this, some of this stuff is that they don't budget those revenues. So it was kind of like going back through past ones and pulling them out. So it was some guest made work probably by me. And I will probably have Bradley sit down with Tom and come up with a better,
right.
Shall we say, estimate for those.
Right, and then if my memory serves me, they're sitting on a surplus of cash of 300 or 400,000, yet they did not make a penny in interest. They were short $2,900 to their budget, so I'm sure it's not actual cash sitting in a safe somewhere, right? This money is in a bank somewhere and because it's an enterprise account, it should be invested somehow. But according to this report, it got zero interest. And I can't find the corresponding line for the town's money. To see if possibly that one got over credited in the allocation.
Probably the entry hasn't been made yet to, to bring it over and credit it, but I'll look at that too.
So this has to be gone over again.
Yep.
And re-categorized in some instances.
So we've got a few, Francine, did you see anything? I think those were the main, main things, we note that we do have the cannabis revenue and the whatever here that we have to still deal with, which we will get on an agenda item coming forward. Okay, anything else on this one? If not, we'll move on to the FY '23 beginning expense report. Is anything, just a couple months worth through August 20th? Is it through August 25th actually, Ed?
Yes, it was.
There are a few pages in here where there is no original budget information to make a comparison. It just shows the actual that was expended.
Where, which page?
Like page 13, for instance.
Well, some of this will be the, once we determine the actual carryover from the current year, until that's finalized, right?
Enterprise.
You don't have the, the beginning budget.
We have, yeah, correct, we don't have the beginning budget.
So that, that's it in all of these instances?
He has to get that from Tom.
Until you, until we end, closing out.
Okay.
The current year and know what the carryover is, I suppose, on a lot of these other special, special revenue funds or community preservation or whatever, because I mean.
Yeah, all the revolving funds.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So this is just the initial.
Special revenue, it's all, okay, so it's all to be based on.
Right.
The year end.
So what we do have though, I'm correct, we have the actual budget figures in here for the general fund, page one through four. That's what's in here, so that's what we can really measure against right now, just to see if there's anything that pops up.
So page four, do we have a status of date on the retirement contribution and where that stands?
No, we don't.
Okay. So the 972.
Well, we know where it stands, we owe X amount more, more dollars, so. Just a question of when.
Did they respond to our communication that we sent them?
I have not heard back yet.
Did we send the communication?
Yes.
So we spent 972, but we need, 972,000, but we definitely need up that a little bit based on what we had heard before, right?
But I thought this is where if we paid it upfront, we got a discount.
They did, but there was an error in their calculation when they typed the letter to us?
There's a typographical error.
Oh, we still owe, okay, so. Yep. Okay. Anything else? I think we said going forward, we're going to be able to track our town hall, electric, et cetera, better so we don't have to do all these crazy cow pow reconciliations later on. So this is starting, starting out good or?
They'll be done monthly.
Monthly, but I mean, not, not way behind.
It's still a pain because when, basically when they're received, either the cow pow or the net metering credits invoices, they show up on my town hall gas and electric report. That will always show being over expended until the following month when they're transferred out. But then another invoice comes in, but at least we're, we're at the point where they're being done monthly instead of accumulating until three quarters of the way through the year.
Great, okay. All right, if there's nothing else on the expense reports, let's keep on moving. We do have in the package, our first sort of ARPA expense report. I had asked Ed to have Bradley just give us a synopsis every now and then. I think we should have a, you know, as we do our expense looking at things, and of course I put it somewhere now, to just isolate all the monies that have been attributed to ARPA. It's all within our warrants, we see it on the warrants, but just to have a separate mini report on ARPA funds as we move forward, I think it's a handy thing for us to kind of keep track of. And that was in our packets, it's a folded up thing. And according to this, one of the things we had done just for everybody's remembrance here, when we send out the award letters, we had assigned a purchase order to each of the people that, each of the groups that had gotten their ARPA award. And so on their invoicing, they're supposed to be putting in their purchase order number. Some of the bills were paid before we had actually set up that system. And so I know Bradley had to go back in and put in a few things manually to make that happen. But theoretically, the PO number here should enable us to track against the decision trackers that we have and the application tracker, whichever one you want to use, will tell you who the applicant was for the ARPA funds so that you're, you're seeing where the money has been, been spent out so far. And this does include both vendor and payroll warrant because the premium pay came out of here as well as the extra compensation on the fire chief and a few other things here too. So it seems to include everything and thus far we've got an accounted, okay, I guess I'm not sure what that one is, what's that? Okay, yeah, we've spent $350,277.21 as expensed so far out of the ARPA awards that we have made, okay? So the idea is to be able to track the PO numbers with the, the actual awards that were given. Every, every project had its own PO number. So hopefully this will keep things a little bit clearer as we go forward and, and we won't have to, you know, be trying to compare notes, you know, a year from now, trying to figure out what that invoice was for, okay?
Correct, and the way Bradley does this is 98% of the information comes over from the expense side, the expense report. The premium pay and the extra hours for the health director comes over from two different reports. So he takes that information from those two other reports and actually cuts and paste it into this. And then the other thing he has to do manually is because of the fact that the early approved projects did not have PO numbers assigned to them when they were approved or even by the time that the first invoices were paid, those PO numbers don't come over. So he has to manually add those, but.
So this is, this is great though, I appreciate his work in putting this together. I think it'll be helpful for us to have a separate ARPA report as we get going on this with all the money that we're going to have to account for. So I'm hoping that every, maybe not every month, but every couple of months, as we start seeing more expenses, we can, you know, we can see what the frequency is. But we definitely want to keep track of the money as we go along.
Yeah, and I'm going to have to look at probably one other different parameter because there may be one approved project that may be over expensed already, so.
Okay, that's not a good thing.
They have another funding source.
It's got to be a better system for that not happening.
Yeah.
Well, it should be the reporting system, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll come back to that at some point, all right. So we are ready, I think we're down to the next agenda item, which are new ARPA applications. We have, I believe. Four of them. Yeah, okay, yeah, I could use one, yeah. Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
Back at 9:30? That'd be great, we need just a five-minute stretch break here, thank you. We will return. On the agenda, the next one is the new ARPA applications and in our packages, I believe we have four, four applications.
Can we talk about what the balance currently is?
Yes, sorry, gosh, I'll pull that up from my tracker, hold on. Just a second. Okay, we are back and we are now back on recording. So on the ARPA applications, we have, we have $789,476.66 not committed at this point in time. So out of our $1,844,554, we have committed, approved $1,055.77. And that was for a couple of things that stretched for two fiscal years where we've encumbered some funds. And I think at least two of these proposals tonight are ones that we had as placeholders that we thought were going to be coming at us and two are still new. The one that we don't have on here, I know, is, and Ed's going to be working on that, is the financial software one that we don't have an application in for. But now we're winding down some, some information with those vendors and maybe we'll have that too to go through. But right now we have $789,000 basically still left, according to my chart that you all had, which I think is correct, okay? So I don't know which was the first one, we had one, I think, first one was from one of our local businesses, Security and Fire Integrations LLC, Brian Hackworth. And this was to basically do shop cleanup and repairs, vehicle repairs and upgrades to their local systems and take control, I guess, after they had had a major fire at their facility, right? And so to get them basically reestablished. So they've been trying to recover and try to get some equipment replaced as well as keep on finding employees. And they are asking us, hello, for?
25 to 35, yeah.
Yeah, okay, $25 to $35,000, I think.
Now, did we have, did we ask for more information on this one? I don't know if I'm dreaming this.
I reached out and emailed them and asked. I knew it was coming up and it was probably only about a week, week ago. They had any, you know, quotes or budget or whatever, I have not heard back yet.
Because my, my concern is like when you look at the spending category, it says premium pay to workers and it says respond to COVID-19 public health emergency, but when you go to the description, first of all, it's very limited. Frankly, there's no quotes, you know, there's nothing other than shop cleanup and repairs, vehicle repairs, stock for smoke and company upgrades to local systems. And then the population of benefit, it says town, school. Why does it say town, school? I just wasn't clear about that, it doesn't seem like the, well, they do say other. But they don't say anything about premium pay, they don't say anything about.
It's not premium pay, right?
Well, they checked the box, it said premium pay to workers performing essential work, but they don't say that in the description at all.
Yeah, no, I mean, this, this one in the categories for ARPA falls under the negative economic impact. negative economic impact.
Right, but they checked three boxes.
Yeah, could be.
They checked premium pay, "other," and "respond to COVID," negative impact. I think that when we had another business, didn't we ask for like estimates and invoices and that sort of thing, a little bit more detail?
Well, we asked him to come in and explain a little bit more, I don't know, the idea, I think where we left that was as he was.
You left it hanging with me again.
Well, he was going to present invoices to you.
Right, exactly, he comes in and gives me the estimates for the.
And it's reimbursement only. Basically, you get the estimate, you get the quote, it costs X, we'll cut a check for X once you show us, either the work's been done or pay the vendor.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah. Where are you seeing?
And the only reason for that is because it's a non-depart, it's a non-town department, where we don't control that section.
We don't control, correct.
One, it says "premium pay to workers."
Oh, I see, yeah.
And that's his other, so three categories there, but down at the bottom, it doesn't say anything about that.
Yeah, no, I think that's actually a mistake, he probably should be in the.
First one?
Well.
And "other."
First one and "other," it wouldn't be the second one, I think that's really an error, frankly, it's probably just not understanding the ARPA categories. So the question is, we've got a range here of 25 to 35, do we want to ask for a little bit more specificity in terms of his highest priorities and?
Well, and if he has estimates that he can share with us of the work.
I guess in our application, we didn't actually ask for pro formas or anything like that, but it's turning out to be something that's helpful for us in our decision-making, I think, but.
I just think in terms of, I mean, the town offices and businesses, that's, I mean, it's one thing, but I think for private businesses, I think there has to be a little bit more detail in order for, for me to.
Yep, okay.
I mean, $25,000 is still a lot of money.
Right, so Ed, you said you've reached out and asked for a little bit more specificity, and we don't have an answer on that yet?
No.
Yeah, all right.
But it does say, "in assisting small businesses to recover from COVID-19 impact projects, not having alternative sources of funding."
Right.
I mean, it's, it's kind of, it's very, it's very inclusive.
Yeah, it's a legitimate, legitimate category, I mean, for sure.
And certainly the survey that we did of the resident support.
Right.
Small businesses, I just think that the application is limited.
Yeah.
I also, I also think based on the application, there's two, there's two, they proposed two different issues, two different underlying facts as why they're in the position they are. COVID, which the ARPA money applies to, and then a fire. Now, whether that's connected to COVID or not, I don't know, but if, if we're going to lay on the fire, then my questions would be alternate funding, you know?
Insurance, sure.
Right, then the insurance addresses, maybe it did, maybe it didn't, I don't know. But, but I think in the fairness equation, at a minimum, the level of documents and requirements that we required from the other private business, in essence, I would argue that we probably set the standard that because you're a non-department agency and we can't just, we have decided not to just give you a blank check, you need to prepare quotes and bids and that, and show us it's going to cost us, and then we will cut you a check for that, made out to that vendor, kind of like the pay-as-you-go. But you got to have a plan in place, and to the extent that town administration's already reached out, maybe, maybe clarifying the language, tabling it.
Yeah, well, I think.
Because I don't think there's enough here to act.
No, I, I don't either, and I think we'd have to be pretty strict on the COVID side rather than on the fire side. I mean, I, I'm not as comfortable on the fire side, I sympathize with what happened, but I think for the purposes of these funds, I think we have to be very careful about, you know, the negative impact is related to COVID, it's not, it's not because of other reasons, I think.
Based on what's here, I'm not completely closed-minded to that, there could be an argument that because of COVID, that triggered it, so I'm somewhat open to it, but we need more than what's here.
Let's hear more, okay, I agree, okay.
It does say at the end, if awarded requested funds, well, no, it says it won't duplicate other operational or governmental funding, so assuming it's, if there's an insurance benefit, and that wouldn't duplicate it, hopefully.
Yeah.
And I imagine if somebody, you know, if they were doing in-house sort of staffing, you know, that's not, you know, hiring a vendor, but it's with their own staff, they just have to show documentation of that.
Yeah, okay, so let's pass on this one and bring it back when we have more information, how's that? Is that okay? All right, the second one that I have in my list here is from the Southampton Park Commission, and this is to basically repair the surface cracks that are on the tennis courts, on both tennis courts at Conant Park. Cracks make it, make it dangerous to play tennis, the entire surface of both courts will be refurbished, painted, and striped. And obviously, all ages that use the tennis courts, and I think I would add here pickleball as well, because those, one court at least is already painted out for pickleball lines as well, so the overflow usually goes there, but anyway.
Won't be after this.
Well.
They're repainting.
Well, can they not repaint the lines?
They would have to repaint the lines.
Oh, and you would have to tell them that you want pickleball lines repainted, too, not just tennis lines.
Yes, okay, well, we could clarify that if we get to that point, but, so anyway.
It says the actual work that they're doing.
So it's just on the front page is all it says, it's just repairs to the surface cracks, and there are some serious cracks with, you know, grass growing up through them and.
There was a page that separated.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it kind of got separated out of the package there, but, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so it was, they're asking for $38,000 for this amount, so this is for both courts. And so, fill us in, Ed, so this is, this is really not, this is not just taking like a six-foot wide swath of where the crack is and digging up around that, or is that?
Well, they would basically cut out the crack.
Yeah.
Repair it, use the proper, shall we say, materials to do that, and then after they've repaired all the cracks, then they would resurface the whole.
The whole thing, the entire court gets resurfaced and relined, yeah, okay.
Did they get a quote?
This was the one that they didn't have the money to do, because what we did when they were building the pickleball courts is we had the contractor get a cost from Vermont Recreational to also do this work. And at that, that time, it was $32,000, but this work would end up being probably about a year and a half after that, so they factored in inflationary costs.
Okay, so it's not just a wild guess?
It's not just a wild guess, no.
And there's no other real source of money for parks to get this, other than?
Like the grant, the park grant or something?
Capital requests.
Any thoughts, anybody?
So, so this is, this is not the pickleball court, this is the tennis court next.
Two tennis courts, yeah.
Next to it.
Yeah.
But not the basketball court.
Not the basketball court.
It's just, so, is it correct that there's absolutely nothing wrong with the basketball court? I guess I have to go out there and look at it, so.
Haven't heard anything about it, it definitely gets used, the tennis courts definitely have got serious grass growing up through the, through the courts.
I think there's, from my memory, there might be some smaller cracks in the basketball court.
I think they are, the park commission is prioritizing this. I'll make a motion to approve the $38,000 to repair the tennis courts.
Okay, I'll second, all right, other discussion?
Well, I'm not against the project, but I'm just against this approach, so I think, you know, I'd be more in favor of tentatively approving it, they can go get a quote, if the quote is $38,000 or less, let's go for it, but without having the quote, you know, so there's got to be.
Well, the quote was 32.
Yeah, but that was X time ago, that you said, and they, they, the Parks Commission, which, respect all of them, made the arbitrary decision that this was the inflation adjustment of $6,000, you know, so if it's.
Don't they have to bid for it, anyway?
You know, approve it to 30, you know.
They'll have to quote for it at this.
Right, so the quote comes back at 45, aren't we going to be back here?
Well, don't need to be back here, if we have a more exact figure, for sure, but I don't know, was that just an oral estimate on their part, or did they get that from the vendor in Vermont, or the $38,000, was that?
No, that was, I guess they, the quote from the vendor was 32, it might have been 32.5.
Yeah, but then going up to the 38 was just their inflation factor, it wasn't based on?
Correct.
Yeah, it does seem on the looser side, for sure.
So, I mean, I'm, again, I'm in favor. I'm in favor of the project, if the motion was to be subject to a quote at $38,000 or below, you can move forward.
Yeah.
But if it's above, you need to come back, because we're only approving the, you know what I'm saying?
I'm just thinking about when.
Well, they're going to have to quote it anyway.
When things are approved by CPC, they'll always say up to an X amount of dollar amount, so they don't always have the quote available, but it's always, there's a ceiling.
But when we did the driveway at the church, we had the quote.
Right.
When, when the, when the other items came before us, the wage study, we had a quote.
But we gave $180,000 to the water department without having any kind of quotes or understanding of how many pipes are going to be replaced.
Well, correct, but we did 10% of the total, of the total project.
Yeah, so it's, you know, I mean, it would either be come back with a quote, or, we support the idea of it, come back with a quote, or up to a ceiling amount. And then what, you're right, what if they come in above that, then what?
Oh, pause, I'm just going to throw this out there. Okay, and quote and estimate are two different things, but they go back to this company and get the quote, it comes in at $37,000. How valuable is that, because of the fact that then we're officially, you've got the money, well, now we're going to have to go through the official quotation process and put it in COMBIs and the central register and all of that, which is going to take time, so maybe the actual quotes come in at 42.
Why would a company, why would a company quote at a certain amount, and then when they bid on it, bid on it for more?
Because they're going to end up having to put bonding costs and depending on the bid.
Well, they're not going to get it.
Wouldn't they have to do that anyways?
Well, not for an estimate.
Well, they're not going to get the bid done.
But I wasn't asking for an estimate, all right, okay, all right, nevermind, I'm voting against this.
So you want to put pending the whole quotation process, is what you're saying, not an estimate?
Yeah, I don't want to cut blank checks, we just heard that, you just referenced that one of these accounts that we approved is overspent, which means we're, at some point, we're going to have to come back and adjust these, I have no idea what's overspent, and I don't know if that's a dollar, or a thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand.
Technically, under Massachusetts procurement laws, we can't bid or quote a project unless the money's appropriated. Now we've got to catch 22.
All right, go ahead, I mean, just call, I mean, call for the vote.
So we have, you know, when the church requested funds to do the driveway, they presented us with a written estimate for the work.
Right, but so.
If they are subject to amissible.
Well, we at a church is not an amissible entity, you did not have to go by our procurement laws.
Right, but they had gone out and gotten three or four different quotations and gave us the lowest one. These guys, because they're under $50,000 right now, they still need to quote, what, three?
Well, like I say, it's going to have to get advertising COMBIs, a central register, and they're going to have to get a minimum of a three back, yes.
So they got to December of 2024, they should go through the process and come back with a legitimate offer with a real number.
I mean, if they already got an estimate, why can't they just get a, you know, if they're going through a company that gave them a certain estimate, how much more would it be to say, is there an adjustment to these figures?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would favor having something in writing from the company, if this Vermont company is one of the main companies that does this kind of work, it's relatively specialized, then, that does all the surfacing of recreational courts and stuff, to at least have their estimate updated from the 32 to something more realistic, and based on that, give these guys that amount of money, and then if something comes up more in the actual procurement process, they figure out where they're going to get the balance, yeah.
It's, yeah, we just want to assure them that they have the funds that they need to do it.
Yeah, I don't want to, I mean, it's, it's already pushing the end of the season again, anyway, we'll be into the spring before this can probably be done, right? So, it's not too much seasonality to this, urgency to it, but.
Well, I certainly support the idea of fixing them, I, I think that.
I do, too, yeah.
We can certainly pass it along, but I, it does make sense to actually have a little bit, at least an updated, I don't, I just, it just seems too loose to just say, well, we're going to guess that it's going to be $4,000 more.
Yeah, I mean, if the $32,000 was a while ago, then I think at the minimum, they need to come back with something in writing from Vermont, whomever they are, with the most recent quote, and we go from there, that would be my suggestion. Any thoughts, anybody?
I would agree with you. Yeah, I support it in theory, for sure, I just feel like, you know, we should expect certain things in terms of documentation.
We want to be sure that we're giving them a sufficient amount, I mean, if all of a sudden, this is a $40,000 reality from Vermont, then.
I mean, really, I mean, they're not asking for a different, they're not adding anything different to the work, they're just a cost estimator, I can't imagine that that would involve a lot.
Right, okay, in agreement, moving forward?
Yeah.
All right, the next one we have, I think, is.
So we're not doing anything with that one, correct?
We're asking them to come, yeah, we'll pass it, but we're asking them to get.
Just an updated estimate.
An updated estimate for us, that is not just a guess of 38, but something a little bit more realistic.
We support it in theory, we just want an updated estimate.
Yeah, based on the original one.
Does everybody agree?
But we're, I think we're generally in favor of the project, it's just, are you correct in saying that?
Agreed.
Yes?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so if they can do that, then we might be able to pick it back up. Okay, two more to go, this one's from the Public Safety Building Committee, this is for the Public Safety Complex Feasibility Study, and this is one we had talked about that we might have a placeholder on, and so this is coming out from, from the committee asking to help fund the feasibility study that would be performed by an engineering or an architectural consulting firm, which would include the following, space needs assessment, site evaluation, up to six sites and properties, schematic design of a public safety complex, design and construction cost estimates and schedule, and implementation plan for development of a public safety complex, and they are asking for $75,000. Any comments or thoughts on that one?
Are we assuming that this is based on an estimate given by someone? I know they have some experience on, on their committee to know what these costs, but might, what this might cost, but I'm just, yeah. Just as a reminder, the senior center request was for $60,000, so I think, my sense is this is realistic, I mean, that's pretty much what you have said, and the committee has said, correct?
Oh, basically with these, we're setting the upper limits.
Yeah.
You can't exceed this, right?
You can't exceed this, and then you negotiate, through the RFQ process, you end up negotiating with the successful, shall we say, presenter or firm.
Okay.
But I do not think there's additional funding, you know, I mean, we certainly could go to town meeting, but the hope is that this RFQ would get out the door soon, and that they'd be on somewhat of a parallel path, or simultaneous path, anyway, as the seniors.
Yeah, and we certainly, I know from the grant committee side, we've looked at things for public infrastructure and so forth, and funding grants for such things is just about, you know, zero.
And Kelly said tonight about the bond bill, but that could be a long time down the road, so I personally don't know of any other funding source that's fairly immediately available.
Yeah, okay, would anybody like to make a motion on this one? Are we ready to do that? Let someone else make the motion from another committee.
So, assuming that the funding's approved and they move forward, they're just going to prepare, I'm looking for the charge, they're just going to prepare the documents and all that, and it's going to come back to us before it gets released, correct?
Yeah, they, the next meeting is September 12, and the expectation at that meeting is that they will finalize the RFQ, and they are looking at the 30th of September, as possibly joining us, in order to give more time for the select board to read the RFQ.
So I'd make a motion to approve the, the funding of $75,000 for the stated purpose, provided that the final RFQ is approved by this board, which is consistent with the charge.
Correct, okay, could we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor?
Aye. Who's seconded?
Francine. Francine.
Okay, motion is approved, so seventy-five thousand in ARPA funds toward the feasibility study for the public safety complex. All right, very good. And the last one here, we have one final one also from a local business, from Bishista's Orchards, Tom Bishista. And this, in terms of the project description here, funds requested will be used to pay for labor for the fruit harvest. Since COVID, the wage scale has increased far past the legal minimum for agricultural jobs. In order to get competent help, we, like other employers at this time, must increase our pay scale. Unfortunately, the market price of fruit is not keeping up with the cost of increases in labor and support materials required to harvest the crop. And since last December, the East Street Bridge has been closed, and Bishista Orchards is located on the Hoyok Westfield corner of Southampton, two point two miles from the center of town on East Street. The bridge closure has resulted in our business being reduced to half of what it is historically expected in a typical year, and the COVID price increases of labor and materials, plus the addition of the lack of traffic, creates a situation where costs cannot be met. And the request is for twenty-five thousand dollars.
So again, I, I have no objection to supporting this, but the standard that we applied to the first business that came in, I think they, they can go about this in two means. They can show, it depends on what they wanna do, because they cite two things, loss of revenue and then increases in wages. So we, I, I feel to be consistent, we, we need a process. So if they wanna use it for wages, if they typically pay X and now they're paying Y, what's that delta times the hours, and we reimburse on that scale? Or perhaps a easier way would be the first six months of this year compared to the same period last year. Lost revenue, if it's equal to or greater than twenty-five thousand, maybe that's all the supporting documents we need to, to the extent that they wanna disclose that information.
But if you're comparing this year to last year, last year was also affected by COVID.
Didn't even go back, I would even, I mean, during the COVID period.
Yes.
You know, so if they look at, you know, twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen.
Well, the purchase of any additional COVID-related things to automate things and/or protect employees, that sort of thing.
I mean, again, I completely understand why they're asking and what, I just, there's gotta be something in the file for that twenty-five thousand dollar month, and, and I think they'll easily get to it. The question is, do they wanna track it by payroll hours? Or would it be easier for them to just show lost revenue prior, six months prior to COVID? And then whatever that period is now, somewhere as an example.
Well, they're matching, like you're saying, matching the, um, you know, from whatever the bridge closed, so whatever, January-ish? I don't know, or December, January of this year, so just calendar year from, you know, January to July of this year.
If the numbers support it, then absolutely cut the check, you know?
So basically just showing some, some level of business from the same period last year to this year would.
Right, which, based on the narrative, should show a, a decrease.
I think that would be fine enough. Wouldn't that be okay? Like from January to August of last, of last year, as, as opposed to January to August of this year? Something like that. I mean, this, given that they're talking about the, the fruit harvest, I mean, this is a time-sensitive one. We don't wanna, you know, that's now.
Yeah, right.
We don't wanna hold them up, so let's make it as clear as possible.
Yeah, because this is a fixed amount. I'm, I'm okay making the motion to approve it, provided they can submit the backup data, much like we did with the other one.
Okay.
You approved up to this amount, but you have to turn the paperwork in so that we have for the audit.
Okay, okay.
I'll second that motion. I think that that, um, that basically gives them a little bit more assurance that they're actually going to get it, provided that they give documentation.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, and I think, I think that that too, um, yeah, still, I think we would still like to see that comparison between the two years nonetheless.
If that's how they choose to do it, they could go the payroll route.
Or payroll, whatever, whatever they do, but just some level of comparison, just to understand the, the lost revenue. But I think, yeah, okay, so we have, I think we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yeah, in a second, yep.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So that takes care of those, and that was for twenty-five thousand. Great, we are making headway. All right, how about, uh, I don't believe we are ready yet on the risk assessment policy.
Town administrator has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Carter, right? Before we move off the ARPA, it's a good time for me to ask, because the water, water department's been asking. We awarded them a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for, uh, basically utilization for the, uh, water main replacement roughly between Moosebrook and I think it's gonna go all the way to Pomeroy Meadow Road, if my memory is correct. They have asked if the select board would consider utilizing that a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, since a portion of that is to move or was to move the water main onto the Route Ten Bridge, which is a segment of that. We did get hazard mitigation grant money from, from that, but they also had to, uh, would have to expend some of their own. So they were asking if they could use that a hundred and eighty thousand for that rather than, uh, pro, programming some of their, uh, capital funds to cover that extra cost.
I'm not sure what you mean.
It's, well, it's, that project is a portion of the entire piece that they asked for, so.
They've gotten the grant money for it.
They got some grant money for it. They did not pay the entire cost. So they're asking if, and some of that project would have occurred during COVID, but it's obviously finished, was finished as of probably, I don't know, April or May of this year, if they can utilize the hundred and eighty thousand dollars from ARPA funds to pay for the remainder of that project rather than paying out from one of their other accounts for it.
You know what I would like? I think that the select would ask to have a representative from the water department come in and talk about how are they doing with the water, how much are they pulling from East Hampton? Do they recommend a building moratorium? Why don't they come in and talk about that as opposed to having you ask for them? Why don't we just ask them to come and talk about that? That's what I'd like.
Yeah, and I think, I think Chris has him slated to come in in September on, on.
Yeah, we had him, I think, coming up soon, I think, didn't we? I think they're on the schedule pretty soon.
I'll tell you, because it's.
Remember, but we, the way that we had to approve this, look at my notes.
I mean, I don't have the copy of their application in front of me. What did they specifically say?
They did not apply per se yet. This is an oral thing through ed, right? The application that we had, though, that we approved, they presented three stages of work for the project. The first leg alone was equal to three hundred thousand dollars. They're proposing, or we proposed ten percent of the total, whatever, possibly split over FY twenty-three and twenty-four. And anyway, the Water Commission themselves is also providing two hundred and sixty-five thousand. So we'd approved a hundred and eighty thousand back in May. And they're also providing.
Yeah, so my, my memory is, is when I brought up about the moratorium, is that in September, we're going to do a special meeting.
Right.
For that sole subject, sixty minutes outside of a board select meeting. We could add this request on and then have a discussion, you know, make it two items on the agenda.
I mean, I don't have that material right in front of me, and I don't entirely, I mean, if they're using a different source of funds, what's the difference? I also have some concerns about, I mean, the water department, I mean, it's an enterprise fund. It's the people that actually are giving town money to people that have town water. And I don't think that's a problem, because not everybody uses the park or the tennis courts or anything else like that. I'm not saying it has to be that, but I would just, it was a larger amount of money than other departments got. And I would rather understand it from them.
Okay.
So, and just along those lines, as a rate payer, the, if they take from the capital, it's money they've already collected. If they use this hundred and eighty to offset the bond, then that's interest and, and money that the rate payers don't have to pay. So if we shift this, you're basically double taxing the rate payers. Now, perhaps they have, maybe there's more details that they would share on this.
Yeah, I'd like to hear them all.
Well, we have, we hadn't scheduled the time, but we did agree that we would have a special meeting with them to talk about water issues, so we have to just have a special one-off meeting on that.
Yeah, the, the first meeting in November is when they're on the schedule for, for the group session, right?
It's kind of the group session, but we were talking about a separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, a separate one-on-one with them and us.
A special Tuesday night session.
Yeah, special meeting just for that subject matter. Okay, so that one's, and one other one while we're on this slide, just dawned on me. Remember when we had the, um, we'd put in the match for the MVP grant for the thirty-five thousand dollars? And then the MVP grant did not get approved, but now it's been, they've reapplied for the asset management grant, which is a similar thing, and I assume that too had a match, which I don't have any figures on, but just to alert us that probably the next time we meet.
It has a match to it.
Yeah, we'll have to just double check and maybe rearrange our approvals on that match and get the exact figures for the match on that asset management grant also for.
Was that already approved?
The asset management grant has gone in, so it's not been approved yet. There's no answer yet. And nothing gets spent until it is approved, but just to say that the MVP one that we had approved for thirty-five thousand, three fifty-five is available to be the match for the asset management one, but we don't have any information to work on it tonight. Okay? All righty, how about, I think we're done. We don't have any update, uh, we don't have the, um, the risk assessment. We're not gonna do the second reading tonight, because we haven't had it fully posted yet long enough, right?
Right.
Risk assessment policy, so we'll pick that up at the next meeting.
I didn't see that in the readings either. Is that what you mean?
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't. We did a first reading on it, but we haven't, this, this should have been the second reading, but we didn't have it in the package. It's, so. Assistant town accountant, update. What's happening? Anything here?
Not much, and I reached out to my fellow STAM members and asked them if they had any experience positively or negatively with some of the posting websites, such as ZipRecruiter and Indeed. And I got back a bunch of interesting information that most of them don't think very highly of them and they're a waste of money. Probably the, the one that I'll put some credence into that might make some sense is one of the administrators said they use the free version. They don't use the pay, pay version. So you can't, you can't whittle it down, which is said that they, you'll receive a lot more applications and unqualified applications than you're advertising for, but it's free. And it's another way of getting the information, uh, out there. And she said, you know, they have gotten some candidates, in fact, she said, they actually hired their assistant town clerk came to them through that application.
And this is through Indeed still, or, or somebody else?
That one was Indeed, because Indeed does have a free.
Free version?
Version, and that's how we actually had started off with the town accountant and the assistant town accountant. However, with the free version, basically you start here on the list, and every day that goes along, it just keeps.
You get buried in the list, yeah.
You get buried. You move down and get buried in the list, but it is free. And like I say, you don't get, you get, do not get to utilize the tools of saying, okay, if they don't have a bachelor's degree.
Some criteria.
At a minimum, kick them out.
All that pre-selection stuff.
Or so many years' experience or a certain license, so. That was the feedback I got back, so.
And have we got it advertised?
Our best bet is, I'll post it to the free Indeed ver, version.
Have we got it on the MMA side or other places? Do we have it posted other than on our town bulletin board anywhere?
I didn't post it to MMA. That's about a hundred dollars. Uh, didn't post, did not post that one to, you know, the MMA originally. I don't know if you'll.
Or better, better place to post it? I mean.
Well, no, I just don't know if as, you know, an assistant for twenty hours, if you're actually gonna get. But we can do it, and I can also put it back out on the, uh, auditors and accounting website, too. We did put it out on that one the first time around.
Well, let's re.
And that one's free.
Let's get it out on that one at least and get it circulating around somewhere. I mean, I, and again, we've been two months without an assistant accountant, and we don't wanna go through this nightmare again. So we've gotta jump on this even harder here somehow. If anybody has any other ideas, feel free to jump in.
Well, is there anybody currently working in town who might have the skills, who's working part-time?
Right. Yeah, if people would like a.
Part-time.
Part-time job, twenty hours, up to twenty hours, is that right?
I mean, is this posted on the Facebook page? I mean, this might be a good position for some people that have some back.
It's posted on the Facebook page.
Yeah.
It is, okay, on the town Facebook page.
Yeah. Because you were saying?
I was gonna say, then, I mean, this is a, this could be a perfect job for people whose kids are in school. There's a fair amount of flexibility. It's close. They may have a, some kind of accounting background, but it might be, I don't know, I just feel like.
Yeah.
Spread the word around town and.
Right, I mean, there may not be a.
Is there a way to put it out in the Gazette? People still look at the Gazette?
Right, I'd probably go to the pay portion of Indeed first before I went to the Gazette.
Oh, really? Okay.
So I think, you know, again, it's, it's not necessarily looking for CPA per se, but anybody who could be willing to help out, has got some level of accounting background would be of help. So if we have any ideas and reach out to any of our contacts, and I know you had sent out a, a list trying to get people for the finance committee and didn't get much response out of that, right? So we've kind of gone this route before where we've looked at the street list, trying to figure out, is there anybody in town that we might try to, you know, interested in the job and have not come up too far with that either, so. All right, well, let's, uh, we don't wanna let this be dragging on and dragging on, so we wanna figure out how we can make something happen here, okay? So let's keep that on the top of our agendas. All right, FY twenty-two, financial audit planning, next steps. So this is where we were talking about, are we gonna go out with a request for quotes? And to whom and when to do that, I believe, right?
It would be an RFP, request for proposals.
Proposals, okay. Yeah, right, sorry, RFP, request for proposals to various auditing firms, including Melanson, but not only limiting it to Melanson. And do we have, we must have something we can pull together as a description of, of services that would be typical to whatever we have in our current contract, right?
I'll reach out. I don't, I don't think I kept the one I did back in, I don't know, two thousand, probably sixteen or, or so, when I was in Beckett. I can reach out to them and see if they still have an electronic copy of it, but I can reach out to, uh, some other town administrators and see if there's, anyone has done this in the last five years or whatever, use that for a template to start.
Okay. And what is our ideal time to be able to find somebody and get the audit process underway?
ASAP. Usually they were, under normal conditions, they would probably come in around January.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right.
Right, so, but, but again, we go back to this assumes that everybody on our end gets all their work done in time and on, on, and row. But I think, um, I think instead of keeping this on the agenda, I mean, we've been talking about this now for four months.
Yeah.
Is, we just set it, you know, in, in the fairness equation, and I know this will sound rough, but we need this done. We want this done by X amount of time. Let's be realistic, whether it's thirty days or forty-five days, toss it back to the TA and let's go. And then the, the response from the TA on the update is either it's done or it's not, and here are the hiccups and why. But, I mean, it just seems, we seem to have the same conversation.
Well, I guess, okay, and my understanding was that we'd wanted to see what the, what the request was gonna look like. I mean, that we wanted to have input in terms of the, the actual request.
I agree with all that, but, but I think, I think our purpose, since we have a town minister, is set a realistic deadline and then work, work backwards from that.
Got it.
But.
All right.
Understanding everything else goes on, I mean, is it realistic to get all this done, do the whole process and do the award by December first?
How long does an RFQ have to be out, a RFP have to be out for people? Three weeks?
Usually you'd want it out thirty days.
So if we get it done, I mean, Thursday, September first, right? So if we, if we use the month of September, it's out there in October, November, we're looking to make the decision. But there's other things that need to be done, right? And I, this is a priority, but I don't think this should be the TA's number one priority, right? Because we still gotta get the books closed.
Right, that's the main thing, too. Yeah, exactly.
If you could find someone not having any work for them to do, because you're not ready.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right, but we do want to get this started sometime in October, though, nonetheless, right? I mean, sorry, September, I lost track of my time.
I think it's realistic, though, for us to, to attempt to make an award in the first meeting in December.
In December. So with, we know, at least we've got Kershaw, who'd come in. So with, we know, at least we've got Kershaw who'd come in to us, we've got Melanson, you know, if we've got other names of people, other auditing firms that we'd want to send it out to, that would be something that, you know, Ed can determine from his contacts, I'm sure, but could we look at, I don't know, a couple of weeks to develop the RFQ? RFP? Two, three weeks?
I would say this, the platter's overflowing.
Yeah.
Okay? You keep turning around and it's, okay, when can we get out the compensation study? When can we get this out? Two weeks is not reasonable. Four weeks might be reasonable.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's, let's, you and I talk about that and come up with a, a timeline and work it that way, okay? And then we'll bring it back next time. Okay? All right. Any other business that can't wait until our September 13th meeting?
Yes. So the compensation study, um, this was discussed at the PPP meeting. And, um, one of the things that struck me, so I just bring it back to the select board, and again, it goes to, you know, we can only pile so much stuff on. The, the primary hangup right now is somebody facilitating, get, collecting the documents, organizing the documents and getting them prepared in such a fashion to get out. While I think ultimately responsibility is the TA, I think there's other people that can do the work within the department or within the town. I propose that we leave the responsibility with the town administrator, but because the board was specific not to allow PPP to get involved with it, that I would ask the board to reconsider and allow PPP to do some of the grunt work in communicating with department heads and gather the documents on behalf of the TA and put the package together.
So...
To then give to the TA to bless off and send out.
Let's be clear on what documents we're talking about. Job descriptions?
Job descriptions, the wage scales, the historical data that we're currently going by, where we came from in the past three years, what's the current book and benefits look like that we just voted on. Basically, put the whole package so we can send it out and say, here's what we have right now.
Right. Now, are not all the approved job descriptions sitting with PQB?
Well, they may be, but when, when we took the vote, I suggested that the PPP committee take point on it and the board ultimately voted not to let them participate, but to make it the TA's responsibility. So in fairness, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I just reconsideration to say, you know, if the PPP can go through, i.e. potentially via Judy, who's acting as our clerk, here's the list, everybody, what's in the files, what's missing.
And then go, then go to the department heads.
Perhaps, as the chair could send the department head, we're missing this.
Yeah.
You know, to get the package together, bind it up in a, in a portfolio, give it to Ed, the TA to bless, but then get it out the door versus, I mean, right now, we're, again, he's got a lot on his shoulders.
I know, believe me.
Others that could take small pieces.
There are two pieces of the puzzle. There's, there's a hard part and a simple part. Judy could do going through your files and finding your current, I'm going to say as current as they are, existing grade and step charts.
Yep.
It would be fairly easy for me to find the electronic version of the Jacob study, even the one that Art Reed did. The hard part of this is really what we want for, the job descriptions are the electronic versions that are approved. That's a question that I'm not exactly sure where we're going to find them.
Right. If we are able to locate the PDFs or paper copies within the file cabinets, I, I, we can convert those.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can convert them. If we can find the paper copies.
And, and that's busy work. If Judy can put the pile together, I can spend one night scanning it all, putting it in a pack and get it organized and send you a zip file on it.
Yeah.
And identify what's missing.
Right. We definitely need the approved, the approved ones, not all the drafts that we sometimes seek to, sorry. That's the challenge of getting the right approved one. But, yeah, no, and I think even if they are, you know, on, on hard copy, they certainly can be converted so they could be transmitted electronically.
And at the very least, it's the first step.
Yeah.
We may determine that 80% of the information is missing.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll have to deal with it, but...
The goal is to have this by the budget season, so I think that would be great if, if you have the capacity to do it. So it's kind of a big job.
Mm-hmm. Well, if we can gather it and get it out of our hair, then it really sits with Collins to do something with it. But I mean, the more we know sooner, then that may help us, you know, go forward with our budgeting process, too, so. Um, okay, could we have a motion to some effect there to try and get this?
Well, just a clarification, so if PPP steps in, I don't, we're not offending the select board, it's okay.
I, I personally don't have any issue with that. I, I don't know. I don't remember our reasoning on the, on the last time around on that, but I think we all need to be, you know, chipping in and all hands on deck. And if you guys know your files better than we do, certainly, I don't see why.
I know where they are.
You wouldn't be the logical first source of, of information to go to. And then, you know, be able to consolidate that and see if, you know, what is missing and, and how do we do that? So, so maybe Judy could help out on, on looking for the wage scales, as you say. And then, you know, we can see what's in the, in the files from the PQB point of view and then work at converting it later on and going to the department heads as we need to if something is missing.
I'll make a motion to authorize the PQB to pull together the materials needed for the compensation study and provide it to Ed for files authorization.
Second.
All right. No further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Um, anything under the old business line?
I just wanted to mention, just to, not to forget about adding an agenda item for the Green Communities Grant.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I got it for the 30th, or that being the 13th, I had it on my head, but just got to pull it out.
Just remind me of the LED things.
Yeah, I have it on my tickler list of things to get done. Yep. So any other of the old business? COVID, COVID-19 update, East Street Bridge, VOIP?
No, we're ready to actually pick a date for the training and the installation, so starting Thursday at the department head meeting, I'm going to reach out to the department heads because it should be a date where they are all here.
Yeah.
Or else I'm going to end up with all the headaches of I can't use my phone system.
Yeah. Well, and I think this one, I mean, I know you don't usually make these mandatory department head meetings, but I think this one, to the extent it concerns everybody, I, I think I would say this is required.
Yeah.
I would like to say that. I know people have different commitments and schedules, but, you know, if Thursdays, you know, are usually the department head meetings, at least, are you doing them twice a month, Ed, or once a month? I'm not sure. Is it after?
Thursday following a select board meeting.
So technically twice a month.
So it's over two weeks.
Right. So, I mean, you know, occasionally they might miss one, but this one is involving all of them and I think we need to have them all in attendance.
Well, I could, I could do that. I can just, vacations come into it to some extent, but other than that, I could just pick a Thursday that would be a department head meeting and say, it's a required department head meeting and that's going to have the training and we're going to implement your phone system after that.
Right. Sounds good.
Under the, under the COVID-19 update, could you fit in just a, I, I don't know the closure on this, but I, I was on an email that I didn't respond to, something about a hiccup on the CARES filings. Has that all been resolved?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. In East Street Bridge, we keep seeing photos, things are getting closer? We're about a month out?
Yep, I think next week they're due to pave, I think. My memory is correct.
Okay.
So it's coming along. It was, it was, I'll tell you, when I actually, instead of going there like on a Friday at the end of the day or at lunchtime, some, sometimes I will still go that way in the morning on my way to work and just, okay, yes, I got to go around the detour and, and it's going to take, take a little longer, but I'll, I'll tell you, sometimes when I do that in the morning and they've got the fence out of the way on the strong roadside and they're working because they've brought machinery on it or something, I'm, I'm a little bit tempted to actually drive on the bridge.
I've done that, too. I've gone down there when the bridge, the gate's down, I'm like, come on, can I just like ride my bike over there anyway?
Well, just, just one thing on the COVID. I guess I'm very disappointed that we only had a very, very few people in attendance at the vaccination clinic, so I think that's not a good sign, whether that didn't have enough publicity or what happened, but...
And that's the one, we, we'd only, I think, if my memory is correctly, without looking at that ARPA tracker, tracker, I think we had only approved like $727 or whatever. Well, I think they've had now three or four clinics and that's the one that I believe is, shall we say, over the limit.
Well, I think we'd only approved, too, this was the third one that we didn't even know about, I think.
We didn't, we didn't approve it. This was actually sponsored by North Hampton, so they didn't come to us for custodial or police duties.
Yeah, nothing.
So I don't think that there's any concern.
Yeah, and we may not be overspending at all. I think, I think those were for the other ones.
I'm just going by invoices I've already seen charged to that, so.
No, that was not part of the previous two that was authorized.
And again, the, you know, the kicker is that those invoices have that PO number on them per the project that was approved and that, you know, if some entity has got two or three projects approved, that they put the right number on it. But anyway, okay. Signatures, we got a few PCFs here. Is that where we are?
Yep. Yes.
All right, who wants to?
Motion to approve PCF for David Zarrowsky for a continuation attempt interim principal assessor, part-time, non-benefited. This would be an extension of 15 weeks, 12 weeks, 12 weeks.
Actually temporary.
Right.
Yeah, temporary one for another 12 weeks?
12 weeks.
Yep. Up to 15 hours a week?
I'll make, that's your motion, I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're from Board of Health. I'd make a motion to approve PCF for Geraldine Swanson. Change in number of hours to three additional hours. It was amended. It's not reflected on this version that's here because this doesn't have the PPP original signature, but we did amend it to clarify that the additional three hours are, expire on, on one of two, two reasons. One, the exhaustion of $4,751.24 and/or June 30th of 2023.
My only comment on this is it doesn't designate ARPA as the source of the, those additional hours.
Yeah, I have a feeling that the, the one that we actually signed does.
Yeah, let me take a look.
Because that's the one I hand wrote notes on when we were in there.
I just want to say that this was not at all what I, when I voted for this, this is, even what you just said was different from what I remember approving. I think you said that there would be a certain amount of money encumbered, but that no funds would be released until we get data and that has to be provided within the first three months of the thing.
First quarter was, first quarter was released.
But also, when I was approving this, I mean, we had premium pay for employees that was a lump sum contract, not part of, not part of retirement or usual operating budget type funds. And we also approved Chief Workman because it was part of his contract and we somewhat obligated. So the two fund, funding sources or applications that went to wages were during, they were retroactive for a period of during the governor's emergency. We're not doing any COVID testing, the vaccines aren't being used, like, we're paying, we're basically paying for 32 hours out of operating budget for wages and an additional three out of ARPA, which is still applied to retirement. This is not at all what I had voted for.
So the two, uh, two questions there, or the, what I heard was two questions. Is one, the PPP did discuss the, the reporting mechanisms and that, and the PPP took the position that that was outside the scope of their authority because we were just acting upon this letter with authorization. And what was before us didn't specify, other than quarterly reports, it didn't specify, but I know we discussed about, you know, this will encumber the full amount, but it's going to be released in increments based on these conditions coming forward. That we felt that that was, that's a select board issue, not PPP, because PPP is only changing the order. The second thing, on the premium pay, was, was awarded not for, and was not based on additional hours. It was hours that they were already compensated for, so those weren't classified as wages. It was considered a bonus, which was exempt from retirement. Here, it's additional hours above and beyond, which is the distinction between the two.
If anybody came back to me and said, actually, because you approved three additional hours, according to Labor Board, we're required to have it be applied to retirement and it was, it has to be considered part of their additional pay, I would have said then, we're going to do it as a bonus. We're going to do it as a contract. I, it was never my intention to set wage and hours for employees as a select board like this. It was never my intention to do that. So I can't support this personally, but I just feel like we haven't seen a single bit of data on what's being done because right now, school's starting, nothing's different, no, no, um, testing is being done, no case tracing is being done. It's not over, that's for sure, but we have a single bit of data about the, the, what's being done.
Right, and we had agreed, I think if we went back and looked at our notes from the meeting and the approval, we agreed that if it's one-third or one-fourth, I'm forgetting which it was, would be released, and then at the end of that amount being used up, we would have a report that detailed how that had been used for, for COVID purposes and the other work hours that were, were being done. And based on that, we would decide whether to release the remainder of funds. This letter is a standard, it was a standard letter that went out to all the awardees. We didn't make individual letters for everybody's specific project. This was one standard letter that went out, so.
I mean, this should say 7:1 to 9:30, if you ask me.
Right.
I mean, that's the only way that I would even, even consider it. I know it's already started. I signed the thing and originally, when I signed the payroll warrant, it didn't even specify that three hours of the funds were coming out of ARPA. It was added together under operating budget and that was the second week into the timesheet, so.
So, and here, we, we should have the, ARPA is the account to be charged, so it's...
Right. All right, so, here.
It's on there, on the original one? Okay.
It's not on the one in our packet.
No.
As long as it's on the one, it's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, so if it's in there.
So the two modifications on the one that it has, I believe, is the ARPA funding and then the expiration of it, so it doesn't continue on. But based on the conversation that, that was set here, I'll withdraw my motion to approve if somebody wants to make a motion that changes the timeframe or do anything with it.
I'd be happy without opening this up again. I don't remember what our timeframe was when we said it was one-third or one-fourth.
It was quarterly, so it would be September 30th. We're not going to release the funds until we get some data and that we would do it quarterly.
So their report is due in October. October 15th is their report.
Why would it be due then if the first quarter is over September 30th?
Because that's when we started putting out the reports.
Oh, I think, oh, the ARPA report.
The ARPA report is due.
Oh, not the, not the report.
Well, I mean, their, their quarterly report for the award, which is the three extra extra hours, is due October 15th, so why can't that be?
But that's contrary to what we said when we approved it initially. We said that we would only approve it quarterly, and the first quarter's up September 30th.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve this from 7:122 to 9:3022.
All right. I just want to be sure that we're not saying something contradictory to what's in the letter.
But if this is the same letter everybody else got, those were not the terms and conditions that this money was, my understanding, was given. It was supposed to be in three-month allocations based on information that was provided to us in a report.
Okay. I just want to check when we approve this and when our clock started ticking on this.
I'm going to re, remove my motion, actually.
Hold on. Just let me just check this for a minute. Wait a second here. Hold on. Why would we have a due date of July 15th? It's because it's when I got around to writing the letters. Sorry, guys. I didn't do it on July 1st. Give me a break. I mean, really, I'm trying, I'm trying. Um, where is this thing? Here, hold on. We didn't do everything exactly on the right date, that's all. Okay. Where is this one? Anybody remember the number of this project? Of course not.
Twenty-two, 23-22.
22. Where are you?
I thought it was up on top. Oh, wait a minute. Are you looking for the letter that was sent out award yet?
No, we, we've got the letter. We're just trying to figure out the date that we actually awarded this and what we, what we said was our notation in here. Uh, hold on. Is it potentially?
Wasn't it 6/21?
Yes, it is. I just found it. Extended hours for $4,751. Yes. It was approved on 6/21, so the end of the quarter, you would be correct, would be September 30th. And we said, um, decided one-fourth could be released, and within 90 days, BOH to report to us on activities needing to be done related to COVID, what is actually being done, the frequency and extra hours work that justifies these additional hours. With that in information, we'd vote whether to release the remainder. So technically, with the award being done in June, then our first quarter would be September 30th, which is correct. So Rini's date is correct in terms of that.
Well, September.
September 30th.
Yeah, so if they're reporting up to September 30th, the report would be due the first or second week of October.
Right. I mean, that's, yeah. So the act.
So it's, ensure October 15th.
Yeah, that's where I was thinking the October 15th would detail that.
See, in my way of thinking, you get funded for three months, and if you want additional funding by the middle of September, you give us the data so that we can approve the funds starting October 1st.
Well, if they get it into us earlier, that's, that's fine. But I mean, right now, this, this period would cover, the three months would be July through September, which is correct. But that's what this, this, this three hours would be approved for.
Releasing additional funds would start October 1st, so why are we asking a report after October 1st? Isn't the releasing of funds pending the results of their data?
In this particular case, it is. This is the one that is tied to that, yes.
Right. So I'll make a motion to approve the, to prove, approve the PCF as already modified by PPP, noting ARPA funds as the funding source for the three hours, that it is not to expand beyond June 30th of 2023, and that in accordance with the original passage dated 6/21 of 2022, that it is released in quarterly increments, and the next quarter will be released upon successful documentation of what it was used for. And, and almost take that whole paragraph that you just read from the spreadsheet that I didn't commit to memory.
And if they can get it into us in time for the September 30th meeting, we can take it up at that meeting.
Let me ask you something. My thought when I did this was that it was not going to, that we as a board were going to raise the hours of an individual employee in town. That, that's not really our job. It's part of the operating budget to make those kind of decisions. That this was above and beyond.
Mm-hmm.
That it wasn't going to be increasing their wages or hours, that it was, my thinking it was going to be more of a supplemental payment. And I think we even mentioned at the time that it wasn't going to be part of the retirement. It was going to be a bonus payment. When I approved that, that's what my thinking was. So when I signed the warrants and I saw that it was actually, and Jen said, oh, no, that's, you know, it's, it's regular hours worked. It actually has to go through retirement. That's part of the board. So, I mean, I've had situations before where I've had employees that have gotten bonuses because there wasn't money in the operating budget. You know, I mean, that was, so I'm basically, we're basically, what, what's, I'm being asked to approve is not what I thought I was approving back when it was approved on the 21st of June. So I just wanted to make that point.
Okay. I don't recall us talking anything about retirement at that time when we approved it. I don't have anything about that in my notes on the sheet.
Well, it was just that I didn't feel that this board, that I felt comfortable as a select board member.
Just doing that.
Raising someone's hours or pay.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's not above and beyond what we had just gone through as far as the operating budget.
Right. And just to keep in mind that this one was part of the original 2023 budget wish list column from the Board of Health.
And there were plenty of other things on that wish list. Just saying.
But this one moved from that wish list to, to ARPA?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion here and a second of anything?
I made a motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I think the date that you gave was June 30th, though. Did you mean September 30th?
Yeah. Approved the funds are done.
Yes, September 30th.
Yeah.
I just spoke.
To be, to be reported on by September 30th.
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's keep on.
No.
All right. Sorry. Yes, okay. Three, three in favor, one nay, one nay.
Uh, next, we have, um, emergency appointment for equipment operator reinstatement, full-time, two weeks. Jeremy Schell, already approved by this committee because of timing, sent to PPP. PPP also approved it. No action needed, I believe, on that one. Then we have a PCF for the same employee, equipment operator reinstatement, full-time, benefited 2,292 per hour. PPPB reviewed that and approved it.
I'll make a motion to approve both of these PCFs.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a PCF for Highway Department, Patrick Wright, employee change of separation. In this particular one, PPPB took no action and believes it should stay as is and not be modified. What that means is that previously, I don't have it, I don't have it in front of me. Previously, he had, his separation was seven, July 26, 2022, when he resigned. The department had submitted a change of date from 7/26 to 7/21, when he failed to call or report for duty for three consecutive days. We believe since we had a resignation in hand, it's better just to stay with that instead of backdate to a separation or discharge. There, there's no impact on compensation or, or benefit payouts, so leave it as is.
I'll make a motion to approve the PCF for Patrick Wright, effective.
Well, we took no action, so we don't want to do anything on that.
So the original date, 7/26 stands.
The original date stands. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
PCF out of library for Carol, substitute resignation. We accepted that.
Incredibly. I'll move to.
Carol Delas, yes. Right.
Maybe we can do the library as a group. And then we approve the PRF for a substitute replacement as needed, part-time, per DM, no benefits. And then a PRF for the library director, full-time, benefited 35 hours per week. As the town administrator stated earlier, our current library director has given her notice of pending retirement.
Okay. Can I have a second?
I move to approve the PCF for the library substitute and for the library director.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye. Sorry. It was only for the two positions, though. It's not for the PRF, right?
And to accept the resignation.
Yeah. Accept the resignation.
Yes.
Yeah. And the PRF for the substitute and the PRF for the library director.
Yeah.
For all those positions, right? Everybody, all approved? Okay.
Yeah.
We've already taken care of the police. The fire EMS is not ready yet. It's not in our package, even though it may be on the agenda. So next, we are at licenses and permits. Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a request from a Madison Philbrook for an event at Conant Park, September 18th, for a baby shower, 50 people. Looks like everything is in order.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Will I second that?
I do.
Thank you. Thanks, Rini.
Rini did? Yep. Okay. And now we are up to Francine and the wonderful warrants.
Yes. Okay. Warrant, and the first several are for fiscal year '22. W-22-3V for minus $5,202. That's a vendor warrant.
And that's just to clarify. That was the Hampshire Sheriff's Office returning on that whole lockup situation. Right.
Right. The repaid for the lockup. W-22-29A for $523.42 is a payable warrant. A reversal of that. W-22-29V for $523.42. I believe that was a return of overpayment, and then that was reversed of property taxes. W-22-55 for $529,447.49. Another vendor payable warrant for fiscal year '23. W-23-2 for $1,397,424.14, and that warrant includes Hampshire County retirement and insurance. P-23-3 for $280,188.90, a payroll warrant. Payroll deduction warrant, 23-3 for $47,121.37. Payroll deduction warrant, 23-3A for $157,846.8. That included retirement. Vendor warrant, 23-4 for $246,047.22. Payroll warrant, P-23-5 for $282,891.89. Payroll warrant, P-23-5C for $1,953.19. We have a reversal of that. P-23-5V for a negative $1,953.19. Vendor warrant, 23-6 for $1,522,181.92. That's a vendor warrant and our quarterly regional school assessment for Hampshire. Personnel, or payroll warrant, P-23-7 for $264,853.81. Payroll deduction warrant, 23-7 for $44,686.36. Vendor warrant, W-22-13A for $21,217.17, and payroll and vendor payable warrant, W-23-8 for $276,312.59. I don't know if anybody else wants to vote for going back, doing this every, bi-weekly instead of once a month.
Yeah, do you want to go back to doing it bi-weekly rather than monthly? I don't know. That's a good question. We have a lot, a lot of activity, obviously, with the end of the fiscal year and the beginning of the new fiscal year, so. Anyway, good. Thank you for doing that, and both you and Rini subbing in to sign in on these warrants. Okay. No other documents, I believe, needing signature. We have a couple of minutes to approve for May 10th and June 21st. I have.
Motion to approve May 10th.
I'll second it.
One small correction. On the first page, it's Kim Florrick, not Karen Florrick, as far as I know.
Yeah, it was Kim Florrick.
Um, under reports, add the second bullet point, last paragraph, Kim Florrick, rather than Karen.
I have a question not.
What page?
Page one.
Page one. Where about, Ad Hoc Grant Committee?
For the, um, town on the bottom, right above the Ad Hoc Grant Committee, right above it. It's IT Karen Florrick. Should be Kim.
Yeah.
I don't, didn't see anything else, but go ahead. Yep.
I have a question, not about the minutes, but a, there was a, where it says departmental transfers. This came up on both of these minutes. So when there's a departmental transfer, how does that get reflected in the previous year's budget? When we're doing budget, you know, projections and so forth, and does that get reconciled on the final budget for a fiscal year so that it's accurate in terms of the transfers?
Yes. If, if you look at the second column in the expenditure reports, you'll see pluses and minuses in that. Those are those adjustments, whether they happen to be made via these or town meeting vote or what happened.
Okay. Thanks. That's all.
Okay. I think we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second on that? I'm sorry.
I second it.
Rini, second, if you'd like.
Okay. Did any, any discussion? Anybody see any other points to correct? Okay. If not, all those in favor of the minutes. Approval for May 10th and June 21st.
I think the motion wasn't bold.
I didn't bring them up as a package. I noticed it was a ten.
I'm sorry. Just one. I'm sorry.
Yep.
My apologies. I have a motion for May 10th. It's been on the floor. All those approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion to approve June 21st.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Francine, second. All right. Any notes there for anybody? I didn't notice anything in particular there either. If no corrections, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved for those two. Great. All right. Moving on. Then, we will get the Green Community Grant on the agenda, so pending items. Clearwater, Ed, you, didn't you say that you had something back from the Beagle people, or?
Yes, and it's moved on. It's actually being, going back and forth between Kestrel's attorney and our attorney now.
Okay. All right. So there's lease movement there. And then the old town hall, that's part of the, just to remind ourselves, it's under the, one of the ARPA grants as well for the repairs on town hall. All right. Next, select board meetings, the 13th and the 27th. All right. And so with that, we will be going into a short executive session, which will be for the following reasons. MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares police. And MGL, Section 30A, 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Approval of executive session minutes, February 22, April 19, and May 3. So with that, could I have a motion to adjourn the public meeting, and we will not be coming back into public meeting, into open session, but to adjourn and go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Umbra, aye.
Fouls, aye. All right.
Fish, aye.
All right.
You made the motion?
One of those two.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.